So we'll start with our pledges to the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the E Texans, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
That's a nice cow in there there.
Yeah.
Nancy, I gotta like one of those for myself.
Alright, we'll have the roll call. Um, Commissioner Heidemeyer.
Here.
Commissioner Pashek.
Here.
Mayor Noone. Here. We have a quorum.
Really?
And we'll call our meeting to order. Um, under announcements, this is actually the check report for last week. Um, of course, our meeting is rescheduled tonight because of the severe weather uh and driving conditions last Monday. I did see that uh TGAA had looked at our check report and had noticed that, I believe it was this uh Google storage on the seventeenth, I believe it had a date of December thirtieth and our meeting wasn't, it was before December thirtieth. And I uh and they caught that for two dollars and twelve cents. So as they got that, I'm like, oh, yeah, I hadn't done like a cut and paste or something. And uh so uh it actually was on the seventeenth. So uh in the meantime, we did get uh mixed beverage tax receipts uh for December and then for January. Um, we got our uh sales tax in January for three thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars. Uh, that was a little bit more than this time last year. I think the last two had been a little bit below three thousand, so um but they were right on with just a little bit more, a little bit less than uh that same time last year, so uh we were okay. Um, one thing, uh Wix, I finally did do a look up on that, on that one Wix. Uh, that was the domain for KingsburyTX.org. We have several domains that we own. We have KingsburyTexas.org, KingsburyTexas.com, KingsburyTX.org and maybe KingsburyTX.com. But they all resolve to the same, to the same website. So it's just one of those ways to, if people are typing in one thing what they think it is, they can still get to the same website. So that's what that twenty-six ninety was.
Also, we're gonna see if anybody else would adopt in our name and use it for nefarious purposes.
Yes, yes. Using it for nefarious purposes, yes. Um, I don't think there was anything too much else on the check report. We do, at this point, we're at two hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and ten cents with a hundred and seventy-nine thousand five thirty-two thirteen being in the Texas class account and uh thirty-seven one twenty-four ninety-three being in our sub-account uh for grants. So, uh, other, just housekeeping. Did the quarterly nine-four-one payroll taxes, so got that done. Uh, paid Jessica for December, in December, so I can keep all the payroll tax kind of in, in the year. Um, I got the W-two to Jessica uh for the twenty-twenty-four uh payroll taxes. And I sent the W-three to the Social Security Administration for our payroll taxes. For that, that all have to add up. Jessica and I were talking on the phone about the uh spreadsheet and the check report and there'd been some comments made that apparently are, are, we're giving out funds. I don't know. That was the thing, you know, if you're in the, a certain family or clique, you know, we open the door to all the funds to that.
Nobody gets funds from Kingsbury.
Nobody gets funds, no.
There's no money gotten by anybody.
So uh, so we were talking about the check report being, you know, on, on our drive and we walked through it and so she has access and we could see each other walking around there. First, I couldn't figure out what KT was and it's Kingsbury, Texas, her computer is Kingsbury, Texas. Um, so she has access to the budgets and uh.
Well, and we've also started putting the check reports on that.
The check report, exactly, that was a big part of it, putting the check report on in the minutes and stuff, so.
Yeah, so everybody can see where all the money goes.
Everybody can see where.
Pretty much stays in the bank account.
Yeah, pretty much. Um, the Bluebonnet franchise fees came in, I did that deposit, it doesn't show up on here yet. Um, it was for about nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. That was for uh Q-four of twenty-twenty-four. I also, uh, what doesn't show up on here yet, I wrote this check to Selco surveying for the survey done at, what's your address?
Seventy-five seventy-one.
Seventy-five seventy-one, uh, Kingsbury Road. That was seven hundred. Um, they had not sent an invoice and then I asked them for the invoice for that and for the other properties. So they sent me the invoice for that, I cut them a check for that. And I've been talking with the uh trail boss for the Atkins Trail Riders. They'll be here on Monday, so planning on having, they were asking if we've.
Is there a breakfast?
Yes, so.
We usually hear them getting started at the King, Kingberry Aerodrome.
Yes, they, they're gonna come in on Sunday, February second um and stay at the aerodrome overnight and then be coming through. We'll have a breakfast for them on Monday, uh, February third. And uh probably, I mean, it would be nice if we had like a big giant cowboy breakfast, you know? But uh we're trying to keep it as easy as, as possible, so it'll be probably assorted breakfast tacos, lots of coffee, cocoa, maybe some.
What time is that?
I, I have to get back with him on what time they're leaving. They usually leave around nine o'clock from the aerodrome. Takes about thirty minutes to get up to, to get everybody up and down the road and, and down too. Uh, but we're gonna open up the hall and have a, a uh, a Trail Riders breakfast on Monday. And I think that's all the housekeeping I have for that. Um, other announcements, there is going to be a, uh, the Chili Cook-Off, the annual Chiki Chili Cook-Off at the. Yeah, it's Big Easy, it's like the fourth one, so it was under different names before. But uh their annual Chili Cook-Off that they're holding uh down there, it's in April. I talked to um uh Myra the other evening about the, the manager there and she uh mentioned that she will be submitting a um special event uh road closure uh for that. So she'll do that in the next month or two for that, because we definitely have road closure for that, that's a.
I need a note I wanted to mention to you, Shirley. We had talked about before um updating that, that uh, that special event permit.
The form, uh-huh.
Do you have like a, an editable document? Did you write that? Did you create that document?
I'm trying to remember if I'd create, I have some printouts at home and I'm, I may have created that.
Yeah.
I think I did create that.
I have some printouts of it, but I was thinking I would, you know, doctor it up and then I was like, this sure would be easier if I had.
Document. Yeah. If, you know what, I will, let me, let me make a note and I will see about getting that to you. If I have it, I, I either downloaded a form and then modified it or just created, created one. So it's been a while, so let me see if I can get that to you.
Thank you.
Um, get street closure.
I'm sorry, when is the Chili Cook-Off?
It's in April, I believe she said April twelfth. I believe she said April twelfth. I may be, I may be wrong on that, but that's kind of what I remember. If that's probably a Saturday, then that's probably, probably it. So, yeah, we'll be expecting a, a uh, a street closure on that, April twelfth is indeed a Saturday, so yes, probably yes. And they've had some really good turnouts at that, so.
I enjoyed it last year when we went over there.
Yeah.
It's the twelfth?
I believe so.
Love feeling.
I know.
All sorts.
Except the cold kinds.
No, don't drop, uh, increase.
It's on Wednesday?
No, April twelfth.
Oh, April, oh.
April twelfth. So, yeah, she's, she's aware, she remembers that she will um to get a street closure request um filled out for us. Trying to think if there's any more announcements, I think that, oh, is it? Um, alright.
I got a couple of things I wanted to mention.
Yes.
Um, I got an email about a, if I, and I, I forwarded it to y'all today, but there's a Soul Smart, um, it's about, okay, the Alamo area, the ACOG um uh in collaboration with.
Alamo Area Council of Government.
Yes. Uh, with the World Resources Institute is launching a new Soul Smart Cohorts. This cohort aims to assist your community in removing red tape and barriers to solar energy investment. Soul Smart Cohort will deliver key education and training to city and county staff on best practices for planning and zoning for solar energy, best permitting and inspection processes for solar installations, engaging, engaging communities in solar deployment and uh additional solar-related topics of interest. And they're having a Zoom meeting from eleven to twelve tomorrow and I wondered if any of y'all were interested. Not interested. Okay. What? Not available?
Short notice.
Yeah, I thought I would stop into it myself and just see if any of it seems like it would be applicable in a space like ours, but uh.
I mean, since we don't have any regulations, it's probably not necessary, really, because we don't, we don't zone.
Yeah, like, oh, we need to plan and zone about it. I wonder if it's more about like, like, you know, in Austin, they would give you some rebates if you, but it's not for like going off grid, it's for feeding the grid, you know? So, so um, I just, I don't know. It would be more appealing if we could actually just help people.
Get solar or something, yeah, rebates or something.
I mean, I have solar and it's.
It's not great, I mean, ours pays for the shop, pays for the whole shop. We have twenty-four panels and it pays for the shop, doesn't pay for any panels.
Did you install them yourself or?
Yes.
See, there you go.
Yes, we did not spend a fortune. We, we, we paid for the panels and we did it ourselves and that's the only reason it worked out.
Well, you still had to get electrician to, yeah.
We had a solar guy who Will used to work for and he cut us a deal and he let us do the work, he basically hired, we were his workers.
Yeah.
So he didn't pay us, but like we, we didn't have to pay him for it ourselves.
Yeah, and, you know, mine is where it's feeding the grid. What, what I'm not using at the moment, you know, feeds the grid, power, power goes off, my power goes off because it's not the battery storage, you know, which is a whole different.
Oh, and super expensive.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, it's a whole different um ball of wax there to, to have uh battery, you know, battery storage.
How long, how long you been running it?
Ten, not ten years, maybe about five years or so. But I had, it, excuse me?
Would it be the cost?
It, uh, it sort of does. It's hard to tell from the, because the way the bill figures out, it's like how much um I use from the grid, how much um I used, uh, how much I fed back to the grid and then there's, you know, I still usually have still some amount that I have to pay each month, but it's, you know, not usually very much. However, I have a loan.
Yeah.
Because I got it when there was a pretty good rebate from Texas uh on it, it was like five years ago. And uh, but it still was.
A lot of, a lot of money.
Paying on the loan, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
It's a, it's a, it's like twenty-five year loan, something like that.
So back to Jessica, a workshop is what you're doing tomorrow?
It's a, it's a Zoom meeting that they're kind of trying to recruit uh area.
But they should give a lot of information that would let people know about the expense, the, who has regulation, the regulatory powers of, uh-oh, ERCOT or whatever, because they're all, yeah. While you don't want to be an accountant yourself, workshops like that sometimes help you realize, maybe I need one.
Maybe you need what?
An accountant, whichever, whichever, whichever part of accounting you need.
It took me a long time to figure out it's kind of almost exactly what's going on there. Because like during the day, if I'm not using as much as I'm generating, then it's going back on the grid. If I'm using more than what I'm generating, I'm pulling off the grid and then certainly right now, I'm pulling off everything off the grid. So it's only.
Supplemental.
Yes, it's really kind of supplemental, so.
Yeah, the install cost, well, if we wanted to do something like that for City Hall, I think we should go with my guy who probably would cut us a deal too.
Yeah, and we'd have to kind of see what, what it costs. I'm a lot more learned about it than I was initially.
Good talking, Jessica.
Yes.
Wonder if we can get donated panels as a city entity?
And then there's something like after a certain amount of time, the efficiency of the panels goes down to like eighty-five percent, but then it kind of holds at eighty-five percent. So, there's a lot there to know in order to really make an informed decision. I kind of did a kind of major kind of thing there, but.
There's a lot of room for improving and advancing and experimenting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so looking more into it. So, yeah, it wouldn't be a bad to get to know what they're talking about, what they're, not, but beyond the, the zoning part of it, but what they're.
Yeah, what they have to offer.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And you sent that email out?
I submitted it to you, yeah. Um, and then I wanted to mention, Helena posted on the discussion board today about um this uh, are you all familiar with the uh State of Tex, Texas Emergency Assistance Registry?
I am after that, yes.
Uh, so we just read about it today. Yeah, I don't know. It seemed kind of interesting, um, something to look into. It's um, but I mean, I guess it's sort of a way to, that the state is trying to collect information about people with special needs, like uh the, in a crisis situation, like people with mobility issues, people who might need extra help in an emergency scenario. You know, I'm not really sure how all, it'll apply to us since we.
Well, it goes, my, my understanding is the information, it's the database and once a year you have to update your status because if you don't, if you're not there, they're not gonna, they don't care you. Like I said, people that are at home or in a nursing home or a hospital facility long-term um and what their needs are, special needs in terms of health or mobility in case of a disaster. And uh, the state would tap the database for your area and send it to your local emergency management. Penter, I guess, Fenter, Wadley County?
Yeah, he is currently.
And then, but you as the mayor is also on the.
I'm the emergency manager, yeah.
Yeah, emergency manager here. And so I don't know if they would send it all to county and county would delegate the people that live in our area to here, which would be nice. It'd be nice that they're on record and we would know who they are and where they are and what they might need. And uh, rather than just, you know.
Yeah.
And it sounded interesting, sounded pretty good, if it works that way, if it would work that way.
Well, it's free, you know?
Yeah.
I, I figure maybe I'll do a little looking into that.
I think we'll contact the county and see what they know about the plan and how it work. And uh, if our red, the people that live in this area, their information come to us and not be withheld from us at least, because we can.
That, that's a good point.
We can do it on our own, we're here, we live there, we can, we can get there just as quick as anybody else can.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Okay. Um, and is that all? Yes, I think that's all I was gonna say.
Any other announcements?
Nope.
No. Alright, uh, public comments or discussion, anything? Yes, sir?
So far what I've heard is pretty good. Well, you've heard me. Good things were brought up. And anybody that was complaining every meeting, the expenses have been out there. Anybody that wants to come and see the sheet has been welcome to do so. Beyond that, uh, today, KWED, there were three stories basically and all three of them sort of shook me. And now I can't remember what all three are, I know the one.
Let's hit the one then.
The one is Santa Clara, city of. There is a move or they're trying to get a petition to uh dissolve. And I'm like, whoa!
Oh, wow.
Yeah, small and it's between, yeah.
I wonder why?
Probably because of the SB, you know, ETJ thing.
Uh, okay, the reason I heard it in the story on KWED is, it's petty always, or so to speak. They are not getting the services that they expected. Residents of the, are not getting, we've discussed that many times here. What is the city actually responsible to do for its inhabitants? Information more than anything. And you have the advantage when you are a city in a group and you get recognized even as individuals. Such is the story that we were just on, so I know an individual that was worried this past round about the icing and, and being out of power and yes, everybody that has a disability can personally fill out the paperwork and so on. If that information gets into the emergency management system, great. We go back to the Astro, my uncle was in the grid with the hospital incident, his power never went out. How do you know where the grid is? You know, but he, yeah. And he's across the highway, anyway. I'm sorry, it was the Santa Clara thing. I imagine the second thing was a gentleman passed and it basically has to do with today's, in some ways, in a lot of ways, today's anniversary, anniversary of eighty years ago Auschwitz was released and shut down.
Oh, wow.
So there are a lot of events going on right now as we're here in other areas.
Some of my flags were at half mast today, the bank flags were at half mast today.
I think that's uh.
That's still for, yeah, that's.
Really still? Oh, okay.
Still within the time limit of the presidency.
I see, I see.
There's a month of salary to have, to have sound.
I've already moved on.
I'm sorry, what was the third story? Because it was just as, whoa, what effect does this have?
Yeah. That does remind me though about Frank, your post about that thing you saw on TML about they're try, they've got that possible bill to uh.
Uh, yeah, the last email from TML had the, they traded update and I'm, I don't have enough, I have two of your title on my hands, I guess.
Well, I typically keep a, keep a watch on bills that have to do with.
I started to read it and one of the first ones I saw was uh, there's legislation being proposed to allow cities to basically ignore the ETJ uh.
Requests?
Requested.
Petitions.
To petition.
Oh.
If, if the area property involves some plan they had in their long-term strategy or whatever, blah, blah, blah.
Well, that's a good thing we got out when we did.
Well, and it also depends on the city limits of the city that you're talking about, so.
Yeah, yeah, but there's a lot of, but it's like, it's still a, you know, your reply to some of the people that were saying that we had no purpose here. The one purpose we absolutely do have and it still exists as a purpose is to keep us independent of another city government. You know, they still want as much property as they can obtain. I mean, they all do and that's the way, that's their nature and I'm not saying that's wrong or bad, but it's not what I want. You know, like if I wanted to live inside of a municipality of, well, I do. But it's to keep me from living inside of a municipality, I'm a city far, far away that has no idea what I'm doing out here, but is gonna tell me how to do it.
Yeah, and tax you for your animals.
And, yeah. So anyways, but yeah, we're still, we're still constantly vigilant because that's still constantly going on. And I know there's more, I didn't read all of them, but I know there's more uh dealing with that type of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And it's really kind of important to find out who's on the committee and contact them and at least email or phone voice your displeasure and disagreement with that.
Yeah.
You know? It defeats the whole purpose of what the, what they did to release people from, you know, undue burden by municipal governments.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, we certainly have this history that people don't necessarily, when you become a citi, citizen of Kingsbury, you know, you don't get this sheet that says.
Here's the.
By the way, Seguin's outer loop is coming right up twenty-four thirty-eight. Or Seguin said, no, we won't let you incorporate your downtown, but we'll allow you to call it the historic Kingsbury District of Seguin.
Yep. I don't want to worry for Seguin.
On the issue, on the issue examples, how many cities are there within the city of San Antonio?
Like Valponi Heights and.
Castle Hills.
Alamo Heights, yeah.
And yes, they retain and have, say, what?
And they have more power as a neighborhood now, even though they're encircled by like Alamo Heights and surrounded by San Antonio, but it has power.
Each one of them are, totally surrounded, it's just.
Community of McLeaney, community of Geronimo.
Yes.
Where are they now?
Yeah.
In Seguin?
Yeah.
Yeah, they are in Seguin.
Geronimo definitely is.
Yeah, Geronimo is like.
And I wonder what will happen to, uh, which is the city that just voted to?
Santa Clara.
Sarah.
Oh, they're, they're, it's just some people trying to get a petition together.
Well, I mean, they could just get glommed up by any other city then.
Well, then Civilo, as soon as they, they dissolve, Civilo will just assume.
Oh, San Antonio.
Well, Marion, yeah, Marion there, they had a lot of falling out, but now we hope that they are back on.
I believe they're kind of sandwiched between Marion and maybe Civilo.
Yeah.
They're kind of.
San, San Antonio has a San Antonio.
But they have like a power plant, something that kind of, you know, has, generates funds.
Does Santa Clara have an adhorum tax?
They all do, except for Staples and Kingsbury.
But the Civilo has been, I think you can just tell by going down I can, the Civilo's been much more aggressive about growing than Santa Clara has just, Civilo got the freeway in front of Santa Clara and all the way in front of Marion.
Yeah.
And so all of that is gone, Marion and the rest of them don't even have, because they weren't there early enough.
Right.
They didn't go in and fix themselves.
But you can opt out of the city's ETJ, that doesn't mean the city cannot annex you eventually. If you stay in the ETJ of the city, then you are subject to being annexed by them and all it takes.
Without notice.
Without, well, no, they'll be noticed because they have to have an election now. Used to, they could just do it.
Yeah, if you're in the ETJ, you pretty much lost all your rights.
But it's the same thing.
I, I saw, I saw the kind of the breakdown, but I didn't get into.
Yeah.
What all it meant there, I have to read the text on the bill.
But to uh, to be annexed into a city, the city just has to find.
A reason.
A, a place, a, 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 a plot of land, a group of. A, a place, a, a, a plot of land, a group of citizens that want to be part of their city. And then they just get a petition going, and I know it's, it will happen, is that you handpick an area where you're gonna get a majority voters that wanna join that city. And then they have an election, and that area votes to part of another city, and so the city goes, okay, we annex you. There you go, and it's done, and the people that didn't wanna be, well, too bad, you're in that group.
Yeah.
And they, they'll, they'll just keep, keep, you know.
Yeah.
That's their out, that was just, you know, it sounded really good when they said, okay, you can't forcibly annex, and then you can, you can opt out of the E T J.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and E T J, not the E T J helps, but still, they can have an election of an area with so many people and so many square acres or whatever it is, I don't know.
So, yeah, there's still a danger of.
Yeah, it's still.
Appreciate the discussion, I didn't mean to extend the meeting by extending discussion, but very thankful.
It's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, in, in that same vein, I read from your blurb or the way they described it. The city in our E T J and Seguin's E T J, uh, the way I read it is since the Seguin has a greater than ten thousand population, they are, they would be under this new law exempt from the requirement of releasing anybody within two miles uh from their city boundary. So in fact, the entire E T J becomes exempt, and nobody can ever ask to be.
Yeah.
Released from there.
Released from it, so it just nullifies.
So if, if, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking hopefully, if you uh petition for release from their E T J now, they would, and they have to grant it.
And this is not a law.
Oh, it was state.
This is not a law, this is, this is just a, a bill, yeah.
Uh, but.
Or it's not even a bill.
And it takes, what, five, ten years, depends on the state of the general population.
Shows that there's a pushback.
There's always.
And these cities are trying to get us back in their grasp.
The, the forced annexation thing, that came, what, in the sixties?
I don't know when that started, forced annexation.
I think, I don't know, I, I think I read that, but I'm not sure.
You're probably right, I thought, I thought it all started in nineteen thirteen when the U S Supreme Court for the first time said cities can annex. And uh, and, and then nationwide, from nineteen thirteen on, they've all forcibly annexed. I, I think.
I don't know.
I've never researched that.
Almost everything that I understand from the United States law, unless a state has a law that requires more, so the least was, oh, you can annex, but you don't have to. You have to read the whole law, not just decide you wanna see.
It was H B from, H B?
I knew it's on that.
Okay.
It's on that.
But that's definitely one to keep an eye on.
Matter of fact, if, if you're the last, last email you got from T M L, it says legislative update or something like that. Uh, I was saying, I think it's right there at the very beginning, there's a list of the.
Yeah, it was, it was the top thing in that little list, but like you had to scroll down.
Little proposed legislation, you perps, topics, and I think this was land use, yeah.
Yeah.
Huh?
Might have to go to Austin.
Yeah.
Testify before that committee that's gonna pass that.
Yeah.
That'd be fun, it's been a while.
Yeah. When they, when they took away forced annexation, I said, why don't they just go ahead and drop the E T J? What was the purpose of an E T J?
Yeah.
This, it serves no purpose, I mean, I could, that I could see, only all it does, it's not under our side of the table, that's all.
So if we get to the issue that we faced when the city of Kingsbury was formed, which I understand is still in litigation, Seguin's annexation, it was or was not illegal, which put us in their E T J.
Yep.
I know.
Who wants to look through all these papers?
Nobody.
All right, any further public comments?
Thank you.
Uh, right, item number three, view of public documents, this is area residents needing help with E T J annexation or the paperwork. I uh don't have any that came in, however, I did um have a, a question about uh, someone was asking about their property and getting released from the E T J. And I was going to take a look at that, of course, I don't keep track of everybody that's handed in their own paperwork. I mean, I could always go through the Seguin uh city council minutes and see, you know, what properties where. Um, cause it's certainly not always Kingsbury, but uh there was someone that was asking about that, and so I need to go back and, and look at that.
Uh, sort of related, but not quite, we should have thought of this earlier. Someone I know was in Seguin's, uh, I guess city limits uh with a developmental agreement, non-developal agreement, or whatever they call it. Yeah, and uh she said, the seat, Seguin had sent her an email or a phone call telling her that it was about to expire, and would she like to renew that and maintain her, her protect.
They get three, they get three fifteen years.
And I said, they asked you if you wanted to?
So can you say no, or that's an automatic annex, so?
Did you, what'd you tell them? She says, well, I told them, yeah, I guess so, I don't wanna keep, you know, I don't wanna have them messing with me. And I said, no, I said, tell them, I said, surely they have to send you something in writing. I said, before you sign it, I said, talk to somebody who knows for sure what they're talking about. That if they don't want, if they ask me if you wanna extend it, tell them no, and either annex me or release me, and our dispute petition.
They'll annex you.
Our petitions, petitions.
They did to that gentleman upon my time.
She's still in the E T J?
No, an E D A is considered like city limits.
D D, yeah.
And if you do a, like, build a shed, they'll, they'll say, okay, now you've considered yourself voluntarily annexed. And you have to put in curbs and stuff in your pasture, whatever. That's what, yeah, he had to, what would they said, he had to do something like a hundred thousand dollars worth of.
Oh, that's a cut of.
Yeah, yeah, and all he did was build a building on it. That's what happens when you say, no, I don't want to extend, it's basically you're extending the deferral before you're forcibly annexed. Yeah.
As soon as they see money with that building.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's got to honor the rules too.
Yeah, so you might double check on that.
Well, the advice you gave was correct.
Somebody that knows for sure what they're talking about.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you get a, yeah, you get up to three deferrals on that.
But I thought either party could, either party can decline.
They're not, they're not releasing you, no, they're just saying you're being deferred, whether you're in the city limits, yeah.
I don't know what it says, but that just sounds, oh, that sounds even worse than.
Yeah, it's, it's not good.
Extents on either side, it's how you read which side of that law, because there's two sides to each law.
That's even more crooked than.
Yeah.
I didn't hear it crooked anything.
I didn't hear that.
Oh, yeah, you did.
I can send you a copy of one.
I'll say it again, clearly.
Yeah, I don't have a copy with me, but I can send you a copy of one.
That'd be.
Yeah.
Oh, not so well.
What it, what it is, it's saying that you can defer three times unless you develop your property. And then if you develop, then you are voluntarily annexing it into the Seguin city limits.
That's insane.
By what improvements you make.
How did they get that, because they signed in the first place?
Because they said, if you don't sign this, we're going to automatically annex you right now, so you get.
Well, why, why wouldn't they annex you right now to begin with?
Their responsibilities on the other end of that, that they have.
Yeah, essentially illegal, uh, so, and they basically, it was a threat.
Yeah.
It was a threat.
They couldn't do anything, so they lied about it.
And, yeah, and so lawyers were hired, and they said that to defer is the lesser of the evils here. And, yeah, they're gonna get you anyway, but you have, you know, these three deferrals that you can do. And if you do any kind of development on your property, and these are all pastures. If you do any development, then it's an automat voluntary annexation. And you have to follow the rules of Seguin city limits.
I think that's such a, if you subject, but it's automatically, uh, you, you're automatically annexed.
It could be.
The whole thing, yeah, I think that's the case.
This is someone who's in the E T J, I'm sorry.
Uh, no, no, these are.
Have you got development agreements?
Development.
Non-development agreements, yeah.
Okay.
It was hard to hear that part though.
So, yeah, I'm not sure what's going on, what kind of city services they're expecting in Santa Clara, maybe because it's much.
I think it's roads mostly.
Uh, yeah, they have a real difficulty with their roads because they have a lot of cut across traffic. Um, and so they have had a lot of difficult, the same as New Orleans, you know, a lot of difficulties with the roads over there. So, and I, you know, not as rural as the Santa.
We're not that rural anymore.
Yeah, sometimes we're not. Right, any other public announcements? All right, item number four, old businesses, this is our consent to edu- agenda items. Um, approval of the December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular commission meeting minutes. Anything on the meeting minutes that needs to be moved to the regular agenda? All right, hearing no items that need to be moved, those will be um approved. So item number five, discuss and consider clerical questions update. This is update on wifi, streaming services, and city laptop.
Yeah, well, just uh, um, I'm on the new laptop right now, streaming, uh, it's great. And uh, the new, the fire station got the new wifi.
All right.
Yeah, so, yes, yes.
This is where we were doing a side-by-side comparison on the same speed test app. And uh, I was getting like forty-six and Jessica was getting like two fifty.
Yeah, just before the meeting just now.
And uh, so I was looking at, it has to do with possibly has, I know, on the same wifi, on the same uh, in the same building, side by side, but it apparently, I wouldn't, just a quick look, it had something to do with uh the decom- decompression, uh, decrypting, you know, on like my CPU may be slower or whatever on that. But it is definitely better than, what was it, thirteen? So now it went from thirteen to two fifty.
And did the station upgrade on their own, or we?
Well, Jessica was.
Kicking in on that?
Uh, I, I think they would like that.
Okay.
Um, I feel, uh, you know, I guess, the last time I talked to David about it, um, I was asking him, you know, about like, well, what if the city kicks in half? Or basically, he was saying that he would like to see the first bill arrive, cause he just didn't really um, know for sure what it was gonna look like. Um, and so we'll probably hear from them about that.
Okay.
Yeah, but um, yeah, um, they would, I think they would like that.
Any donations are always welcome, just uh don't say where they're from.
And uh, are we just keeping the old laptop just on the side in case there's any, anything on there that?
Yeah, it's just in the office right now.
Okay.
Um, I, I do think they've successfully moved everything over to this laptop, but um, but yeah, it's um, I mean, I figured I would wait a little bit and make sure that there's not something that I just missed. At some point, we should wipe that laptop, because the whole thing is that it's gonna stop having security updates. That's not until second half of the year, but yeah, let's not have our staff there when that happens. Um, and then also, I've been looking into um streaming simultaneously to Facebook and YouTube these meetings, but I don't know how to figure it out yet, so working on that.
I thought, did you say something about upgrading your camera, or no?
Um, I did not.
Oh, okay.
I think the camera works good as long as the speed's there.
We'll see what it looks like then.
Right, as long as the speed's there, I think the camera shouldn't have any issues, it has to do with the speed.
That was one of the issues you had, the hardware.
Well, you know, so I've been using pretty frequently a camera of my own.
Yeah.
Um, and the thing that I like the most about that one compared to this one is that it sounds better.
Yeah.
Um, but um, I just, something's going on with the connection to the computer. I, I tested it a little bit today before the meeting, and it, it went black. And I, uh, and that happened last meeting, last month, and I think it must have something to do with that camera. So this one, you know, it's not as nice an image, but it's fine, but then the sound, the sound is the most important thing.
It is.
And it's just not that great on this one.
A microphone somehow, separately?
I mean, I think I could, I think I could, yeah, like, plug it in separately and then maybe I would rig it up to on, on here somehow also, I don't know, I, you know, yeah. I, I've been contemplating what that would look like. Or maybe we could just get like an area mic and like put it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like, this little recorder that was here before I started, uh, I think it sounds better than this.
Yeah, I think it sounded.
When I go headsetless, I use my web camera for speaker. And uh, yeah, it's definitely, even when I'm sitting right in front of it, it's definitely not as good. So, yeah, maybe we can look into a little, um, it, it's, we have them at work, it's, it's got speaker and microphones built in for a conference room kind of setting, and they sit on the table and you can hear everybody in the room and it's.
That's good.
It's a, it sounds good enough, I.
Can you kind of borrow one of those?
Well, the ones that I'm on and camera, they're all in Germany, so.
Oh.
So I probably couldn't, I probably couldn't lay my hand on one very easily, but yeah, uh.
We have an international government issue there.
Yeah, they're working out of the office there, and so our meetings are usually when they're in a conference room and they have
Yeah.
the device there, um, you just have to make sure that the other people are, don't have their uh speaker on.
Some is feedback.
Yeah, feedback, echoes, yeah, but they work very good, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think they're all that nice, we can see that, yeah.
Brand and, yeah, brand and.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Model number and stuff like that.
About that.
Yeah, okay.
Because, yeah, I mean, as Alison said, the sound is everything, the sound is the important part there.
Yeah, I mean, one thing else.
I know everybody wants to see our gorgeous faces.
One thing else is.
Clamor, he was clamoring.
I found that this camera that we're using right now, um, the computer I was using to stream, um, it didn't like that computer, and it had an additional like like, uh.
Okay.
Something about that computer and this camera was not agreeing and was making the sound worse. So this camera does sound better on this computer than it did on that computer. Um, but it's still not great.
Yeah.
But, yeah, well, yes, I, I'm happy to look at some desk microphone things and share what I find with y'all.
So everything's been good so far, the wifi's good, the laptop's good, and then we'll see what, what the billing looks like on the wifi for the fire station. Item number six, uh, Kingsbury Volunteer Fire Department lease agreement. So is it, there was an item on here that we were kind of looking at that again, uh, did?
Well, yeah, I was kind of wanting an update, because I'm not talking to anybody, but I know David, we're trying to schedule something with David, trying to schedule something with David to talk about with the lease, and what Kingsbury Fire Department wanted
Mm-hmm.
or expected from us, we want to get it kind of all ironed out and settled.
Okay, do you have a copy of the lease agreement?
No. You had the only copy that I know of. Yeah.
I don't know if I have that copy here, or if I have that with uh, with, with my other paperwork.
Uh, you were last, last development meeting, you spent, you talked, you were there for a while. Uh, you were last, last development meeting, you spent, you talked, you were there for a while. And I believe Jessica sees them semi oftenly regularly sort of.
Renewing, are we able to renew until?
Or they were gonna, they were supposed to have one of their committees, uh, commission, or business meetings.
Right, and then it didn't, it, it ended up not getting on their agenda and, cause we were talking about it and, yeah. Um, we, here's the lease agreement, can make you a copy because this one came out really funny, cause it's like one, two.
I have it in my email, I can forward it to you.
Okay, good.
I'll send it to you and you and you. You probably have it.
Well, I, I have one that I think looks just like Shirley's.
Yes.
It's got about both sides of the paper upside down.
Yes. Yeah, that was, it was printing out on two different printers or something at the time and, yeah.
But are, so are we still going to communicate with them about our lease? Are they gonna change the lease, they want to change the lease terms or?
I don't, we, we weren't looking at that because there were, you know, other meetings that weren't, that were more community outreach than city business. And that's where they were concerned because of the insurance and, and the other, you know, components of that that were causing them concern because first and foremost, it's a fire station. And we've got some other things in the works that, you know, maybe we won't be here that much longer anyway and we can, won't have to worry about it being a-
Issue.
Fire, yeah, fire station issue, however, that doesn't mean we can't take a look and see if that's something we want to revisit.
Alright.
That, that lease is effective until September of twenty twenty-eight. So, uh, is it September, yeah, September thirty?
It's a ten year.
Twenty twenty-eight, so that's, uh,
I mean, we're not doing, you know, any extracurricular things in here except for the, the, the city business meeting, so is that fine with them?
Be able to do, you know, on the occasional workshop or, uh, yeah, or a town hall meeting sort of like.
Curious, does anybody know if they do as other public buildings in years, so-called public buildings? So-called public buildings, I'm sorry, because churches are not public buildings. Uh, neither is Big E, neither, but yet they're considered public. Anyway, the question was, is anybody aware if the fire station allows people to ask for a specific use of a specific time for your outreach meetings or whatever?
I mean, in our lease agreement, no.
But do they?
They have, there have been people to reach out to the board of the fire department to, for use for public events. And the answer has been no across the board.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Since there used to be voting here, well, it was before this building was built, but they had public voting, uh, anyway.
They've always been, I mean, we had a, you know, habitable spaces had an art show in this room. And I remember, you know, Dave was like, this is the only thing, this is the only time, we're gonna let you do this, cause this is not a public building. You guys need to remember that and, and he said the same to, you know, I mean, again and again. And I get it because if they, if there's some emergency, they need to use this room.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm moving my mindset away from anything else except what our lease is, and that's our meeting, monthly meeting.
I mean, we can have a town hall in one of Shirley's buildings maybe or, or a church or somewhere.
As I said, there are many locations that are open on a- And also with the monetary, some of them, there ain't no monetary, just need, there's no win. For others, there's a little bit of monetary, uh, you got your housekeeping, I mean, what, you want to go into a place with filthy restrooms? Anyway.
I, I think, I think also for the fire department, it's like, you know, opening the gateway to other things also means like somebody done, why can't I have my wedding there, why can't I have this thing there, why can't, you know? So, that's also why they want to be careful.
Okay, so like I said, I'm, I'm okay with their lease as it is and we follow that and everything else can wait or move, you know, I'm not, no, no more concern with that then. Unless they ask, so that can be taken from the agenda now.
Yeah.
We're just gonna meet here once a month and, uh-
I mean, certainly if there's a town hall or public hearing that were required, we can certainly see, you know, and work it in so that it doesn't interrupt with their schedule and, you know, and see if that's, if, if they will approve, you know.
Well, if, but if we need a space, we'll just see what kind of rental cost we have to, maybe rent a place. No problem.
Item number seven, possible real estate acquisition, this also has your name on it.
Oh, and like all the other things with my name on it, I don't know, I'll make sense to other people to give me, give us answers and information.
Look at Sam, Sam knows.
And Sam and Dennis too, Sam probably got-
And I called Dennis this afternoon and, uh, asked him if, uh, February twelfth was okay. But, uh, we have scheduled a closing on the transaction, uh, of kind to, uh, Kingsbury. On that transaction, we've scheduled it for closing, a five-star title on, uh, September, excuse me, February twelfth.
Okay, that's my birthday.
Feb- uh, February twelfth, uh, the time's gonna be set, but they, they haven't set a time. And, uh, but, uh, and I can ask for a specific time, uh, but I just wanted to check first and make sure that that date is, uh, not a conflict for, for everyone else. Uh, as I said, uh, I think in my text to you was that, uh, the two required people to be there are the mayor and Dennis, uh, to be signing things. But of course, if the city commission wants to be, and I will be there to assist, and but certainly the city commission, uh, this is a big deal and if you guys want to be there, Allison and Frank, then, uh, we want to make sure that that, uh, that that date is, uh, okay with you. And we should be closing the transaction at, on, uh, February twelfth. And, uh, of course that, once it's closed and possession transfers over and, uh, we will sign the new lease, uh, with Dennis at that time. Uh, and otherwise, uh, possession will, as of the date of closing, uh, we get possession of the property.
So, I've done, I've done, uh, title closings onsite and then I've done some that are, no, that you can, yeah, do them by, yeah, yeah, do you sign or whatever and, uh, but apparently this one is onsite.
Well, since we're all, uh, and since we're all local right here and, uh, I don't see any reason why we need to do it by internet or email or by mail.
Will it be at the property itself?
Actually, that's something, since you brought it up and you are the sponsor, uh, you could ask for that.
No, I think downtown, at their office is fine.
That's fine. I just, I didn't know if they, I think, I've dealt with my car a few times, so. I, I can't remember, that was one that was inside or not. Onside is fine. Oh, no, not onsite, I mean, at the title company, outside.
Oh, is that what, okay, yes, yes.
So, is it at the title company?
Yes, it's at the title.
And can we all go or, uh, or do we have to?
Oh, you missed that part, yes.
Yes, yes, you're invited.
Okay, what time is it?
It, I will make it fit, yes.
And it's also on the twelfth?
Yes.
Well, things happen on the full moon, gang, you guys, it's funny, it's also the full moon.
Is it really?
Nothing wrong with that.
Nothing wrong with that, it's just, uh, interesting.
If you do it before midnight, it'll be okay.
Um, is it weird to, should I plan on coming and, and live streaming with my phone? I mean, I, I'm, yeah, sure.
I would think that'd be great.
Okay, okay, cool.
It'd be really cool if it was like snow and sleet and the wind is blowing and you sit out there with your umbrella going live reporting.
I need to, uh, get to them, uh, the, uh, they've asked for the minutes. I think we have a resolution that authorizes the mayor to sign all the documents.
We do.
Uh, but, and I think that resolution is in the minutes of that meeting. I just need to go back and locate, when did we do that, October, uh, well, it may have been November.
Well, the resolution that has the date we did it.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll pull it off, the, the resolutions are on the website. And, uh, I'll pull that off and get it to them and they wanted, uh, oh, they just asked me who, who's gonna be signing for the city and I told them the mayor, uh, Mayor Shirley know them. Uh, will sign all of the documents, so I, there's just that one piece of paper that they want and that right now.
The minutes with the resolution.
She didn't ask for a resolution, she asked for the minutes.
The minutes that authorized.
I think we have both. And so I'll get that to her and that's, uh, I think that's the, the last thing that, uh-
Well, Shirley signed a resolution, so that would, that'd be like kind of redundant.
Minutes are countersigned by the city clerk, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
Adjusted to.
That's, that's why they rely on it is-
Certified by her, yeah. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Jessica, is she busy notary?
And did I become a notary? Uh, not, not at this time.
Okay, no, I just, I thought, one time you said you might, but, and people, I recently got to question, you got him this weekend, Shirley. Is there a notary in town? Yeah, the mayor.
Yeah, I'd notarized for some, something, someone called the store.
Yeah, I told him that's, I don't know if she's there or not, but that would be your best bet, call the store and ask if she's there, anyway.
I, I happened to be there and whoever, the person that answered the phone said, yeah, if you come now.
Immediately.
So, yes, yeah, Sam, and Sam's a notary, which is very handy for me. And I did, uh, Charlotte, Charlotte at the, at the Airdrome is also.
Hey, public knowledge, people say thank you. Oh, wait a minute, I can't hear what's coming back on.
Episode of Gunslow. Everything you need's down at the country store.
Who's Miss Kitty?
Mayor's there. His marshal's there.
I'm working the bar and they're like, yeah, this is also our mayor. Which freaks some people out when I'm getting them beer and, beer and wine, uh, from behind the bar.
I was pretty surprised when I met you at the store.
It doesn't matter. I don't often like mayorly. Alright, item, oh, are we, anything else there to, okay, so we'll get this going and exciting things and-
About your calendar and, uh,
Yes, I have it on my calendar.
Term up the time and I'll let you know.
Okay, good.
And Jessica had mentioned, you have an eleven o'clock appointment that morning.
I do, but it's-
When I said, uh, I'll, I'll, if, if possible, I mean, if you'd like for me to, I will, uh, and if you're gonna be there live streaming, I'll ask him to do it at, uh, two o'clock, uh, that afternoon. Would that give you time to?
Yeah, I think two would be good.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just supposed to meet with that, uh, TGAA guy again. Um, that's, I'll, I'll talk about him later. But, uh, I, I know it's, I know it's super flexible, so it really wouldn't be a big deal for me to change that time on my end either. Um, but yeah, if it's at two, I bet I can just do both of those things.
Is there any other, uh, any other time requirements that I might relay to the title company?
There's nothing, no, there's nothing that I can't.
What day of the week is this?
It's a Wednesday.
Hump day, you gotta get over the hump before the full moon gets out.
It's only hump day for those who only work five days a week.
All days are the same except I don't have to work.
I mean, suppose it is still the center day of the week, whether you're working on the weekend or not.
Yeah, yeah.
But maybe it's, they're just all at the same time.
Connotation to it, you know, weight to it.
What difference does it make?
Alright, on to item number eight, discuss and consider community development block grant program application update.
Right, so I think that Shirley has heard about this on her end, but, um, basically, we're not gonna apply for that grant because, um, you know, I, I had a conversation with, um, the, the woman who has been working on our application process and she was like, well, the next thing you need to do is a city, uh, uh, public hearing. And she was like, you know, it's, for most people, it's just basically like a time where you just say, this is what we're gonna do. And I was like, well, we don't know what we're gonna do.
Yeah, and plus, we didn't fit into any of the things they wanted.
Yeah, exactly, and I, and, you know, I, I talked to her about, you know, y'all are saying it only can be water, wastewater. We don't have those services, you know, and it has to be on a grid and so we, we absolutely can't do those things. And, you know, well, if it was roads, but then they had us sign this resolution that said that we would only apply for a top tier thing, and so then I was like, well, can that be changed? And she was basically telling me that, like, that, what is it, that ship has sailed.
I mean, we don't owe them anything, right?
Yeah, so, and it's totally fine and, I mean, it's frustrating because I feel like that-
We kind of said this at the meeting to him months ago, that this was not gonna work out and-
Just kept, you know, they're gonna come and door to door, go and, and find what your people need and figure this out, you know?
Really care what our people need, our people need, our people need off-grid rebates for water, our people need something that's not, they don't understand what Kingsbury needs, so.
I don't know, I mean, I think that that guy, you know, it's just interesting, like, I feel like his job was just to, to get us to move forward no matter what, you know, and then it's like all of these people I've been dealing with, you know, that are in the background, working through the paperwork, like, I mean, they seem like pretty straightforward people, you know? But like, here comes the music man to town or whatever, you know?
Yeah, we were trying to shoehorn something in and we didn't, we just really didn't have anything that fit our circumstances and our needs.
Well, and then I went and talked to the, the Texas Water Development Board people and there's nothing, I mean, really, I was like, can we get rebates, can we get, you know, we cannot, we, we don't have a grid, we can't do water. We, we'd have to, everybody has to do their own thing, is this possible, there's nothing there, there's nothing out there. There's no money out there for us.
Independent people to do independent things.
And, and you can spend a million dollars, but they won't let you spend like seventy-five grand or something, it's like-
It's a good, it's a good learning experience.
Now you're talking about-
Have a feet wet in it?
Yeah, that's insane.
Yeah, it's not sure.
Decide on something that we really need, we really want, then we can say, here's what we want, oh, that's not, well, when you find it, bring it to us. And that, we're done.
I mean, it's, it sounds to me like Kingsbury wants individual water collection off of houses, some kind of rebate, they want some kind of help with things. We definitely know we want the community well, which doesn't get done, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely, it was not for nothing, I mean, we certainly got a lot of experience, you know, in, in this whole process of it and really kind of wets down underneath some of this. And so, it's, it was worth the experience, but, yeah, I believe we're all, if, we were trying to fit that square peg in the round hole.
Really, really, it'll come back, it'll come back to us.
Yeah, we're not saying never, we're just saying that we just don't have anything that fits this particular grant profile at this point.
Yeah, I don't feel bad about how things turned out, um, and I, I do think I learned, I mean, it, it's kind of a brain adjustment of like, oh, like, you know, it's like, nothing's free really, you know?
Yeah.
But, um, anyway, they, um-
As long as we're true to our principles, it's okay, no matter how it turns. As long as we're true to our principles, it's okay, no matter how it turns out.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway, I have this letter I need Shirley to sign after the, uh, meeting, uh, kind of officially withdrawing from this.
Okay.
Process. And that'll be that.
All right, anything else on that?
Um, well, I just wanted to bring up that there, there is that one city, Bernie? There's a city in Texas that's trying to get rainwater collection happening and, um, I can look back on many of those, I think, yeah, and, and, you know, in the future, maybe we could reach out to them directly and just talk to their people and say, how'd you do it?
Yeah.
Where, where'd your money come from?
Mm-hmm.
You know? Because, yeah, I think we're so unusual, we just have to stick with what, what we do and.
Yeah.
Find things that fit us, not try to fit other things.
Yeah, we can certainly learn from all different areas, we learned something from this, we could learn something from other communities, yeah.
Tyler just said in all caps, roads downtown, that was something he's interested in.
Which is something that Grant would've paid for, but they're unwilling to apply for us, which is ridiculous, it's like, okay, guys.
Because it's not gonna happen this time.
Yeah, and they don't think probably they're gonna make as much money off of it or something. Oh, because it's not the priority this time, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just basically, they just basically didn't wanna, you know, because they, they only make money if we get the grant, they don't really wanna work with people who don't wanna, that, who aren't a sure bet. And if we had had a project that was in that top tier, we were like the top of the list, like, basically, we would've been like guaranteed to get the money if we had had the project. I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's pretty true, like, I saw the list and we were at the very, we were the very top thing on that list.
So.
But, if we had, um, if we had applied for a, a lower tier project, we would've lost twenty points or something, and so we would've dropped significantly on that list.
So, do you know are roads always lower tier, or is it just lower tiered this year?
This year.
Just this year.
So we could wait, maybe roads are high tier next year and then we apply next year.
Or even if it's a second tier, you know, maybe we.
Apply ourselves without the help of Grant Works.
The more you fail, the higher up you go.
Yeah.
It's like, it's like the draft, you know?
Wasn't that decision, uh, those requirements were set by ACOG though.
Yes.
Yes.
And that's, so it's up to ACOG to change.
Right.
We, until they change their, uh.
So, oh, so waters, so there's certain things that are always top tier, or do they shift it every year to give?
They, they evaluate their region, just like the strategic plan, and they look at what is needed now, what's, what's the current situation, what are people asking for? Or what do they see that needs to be done more urgently than not?
Yeah.
Right.
And so they, you know.
But still, like, if we were the very top preferred community for this grant at the first tier, then maybe we would have a chance for something second tier.
Yeah, second tier.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
Um, so, so we just need to sign that and then?
And that'll be the end of that.
Yeah, that'll be the end of that, however, it doesn't mean that we're not, it's still, you know, looking, because as, probably where, where Santa Clara has some people, you know, dissatisfied with their services because they have a property tax.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, they have a property tax.
Yeah, what do they do with that?
So, it's not a big problem, but they do have a property tax, if you were going to tax the people, then you need, you, you, yeah, I would be expecting something for this, you know, from that, so that, we, yeah, we do not have an ad valorem, and, you know, a property tax, so it's, you know, people are not out there asking for or demanding services from us, which they certainly can, and we can expect that, yeah. Yeah, sure, we can do that, uh, if you wanna pay property taxes, so.
We'll talk to your neighbor about that, people.
So, without a property tax, any additional services, even if, I mean, just rainwater or whatever, it's gonna take grants.
Yeah.
To, to get those things done, so we're not cutting off this, that avenue completely, we're just, for this particular, uh, CDPG grant, we're gonna hold off on this until we find something that fits our situation better. All right, item number nine, discussing and center interlocal agreement on subdivision regulation update. And this was undermined, but I think you have been doing more research into what other communities, because what I had researched, uh, I had come under the, you know, that there was, uh, that there was nothing you could do in the ETJ, however, you're finding that there are things that you can't do in the ETJ, so it's.
We can, we can regulate, um, subdivision in the ETJ of our city. We cannot, and, do anything with zoning. And subdivision is pretty limited, just like it is for the county.
Okay, so we could potentially take over plating from the county in our interlocal, in the ETJ.
Yes, yes. In the ETJ.
I mean, the city, yeah, no, city limits for sure.
Absolutely.
Yeah, for sure, but there was.
The ETJ, we can also.
It was, it's in our interlocal that it is not in the ETJ. However, what Frank was finding out is that in some other cities, it is in their ETJ, in, with Wauwahleby County, that it isn't, that they are, they do have, uh, plating and subdivision, uh, control in the ETJ.
Ah, so is that something we could just rewrite and send out to them?
So, I don't, I don't.
We could, but do you?
It could be, but do we want to?
Do you want to regulate the subdivision? Cause you have to meet, you have to meet the state.
Do you wanna have plating control in the ETJ?
You have to meet the state laws on, on regulation, subdivision. Absolutely, primarily, and you could maybe make, uh, more refined for our local area, but not, not a whole lot, there's not a whole lot, even the county says there's not a whole lot they can do, they get the latitude to, uh, further like the driveways, or the septic, that's the environmental. Uh, but that's also part of their plating, because they say, well, you need as many acres, this is the state requirement of land area to have a on-site septic. Uh, so, the county makes sure that that's what the plat is for. Would be doing the same thing they're doing, I think, I don't see much of an advantage to us.
To.
So it doesn't give us more freedom?
The city of Kingsbury to be regulating the subdivision, doing flats, doing plating.
Doing plating outside of, well, we, I mean, we're looking at this because of, it looked like some extraordinary costs to at least one individual that was looking to subdivide, so that's kind of where we started looking into this, I mean, is it still something?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm looking at local government codes in relation to this too, and it didn't, well, I do have some on my computer, I'd have to go back, double check, but I'm thinking that if it's more than five acres, if it's more than five acres, you don't have to plat it. If it's less than five acres, you do have to plat it, but you can plat it with simple meets and bounds. It doesn't, I haven't, I've yet to see anything that says it has to be surveyed, meets and bounds. Only thing you have to, uh, orient it off of one of the existing corners of the property that's being subdivided, which would have been surveyed. It has to orient off of that one corner, after that, meets and bounds. So, I don't know, and, I don't, I didn't look at the county's price list for what they charged me, I think it was the thing you sent me one time, I think.
Yeah.
And, that looked terrible, doesn't it?
Yeah, no, well, you had, you had the price list, and I, so I'm still not sure where these huge costs came from.
I don't. I don't know.
Because, I mean, it's not that I understand all the acronyms and abbreviations in the prices that I was given, so.
You know, I, I can say.
I think some of that may have come from the engineering or surveying company.
Yeah, maybe, maybe.
Yeah.
Uh, cause they can regulate, you, they could require the, the drainage.
Yeah. And this was, yeah, county, yes.
Flood plane, and, you know, I don't know, it seemed like, if, if I had, well, I have my acres, and I said, I'm assuming there's a flood plain or drainage issue, I mean, shown on that, I haven't looked at it, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
In plating and break, or subdivision, you create drainage problems that aren't there in the.
Yeah.
That, that's why you have, why you look at doing it, and, but you also take on the responsibility, the city, if they were to give away it, then they're actually responsible.
Yeah, but that's, yeah.
And I would think that, you mentioned that you could do just meets and bounds.
That's, that's.
And subdivide by doing that, but I've never heard of a surveyor, a registered surveyor, doing a survey with meets and bounds unless they draw a picture.
Yeah.
They always do a picture, that is the plat.
Well, you know, yeah.
That's the plat.
That's right, it is, the, the drawn picture is the plat, but does it have to have to be done by a surveyor? I didn't, I didn't see anything that said it had to be surveyed, I just saw, the only thing I ever saw on, on the, the plat was that it, a meets and bounds, like I said, taking a pre-designated corner or point on the existing survey.
You have to have an absolute, at some point, you have to be able to go back.
If you regulate subdivisions, like this, the county does.
Yeah.
Then you're going, they, they look at the plat and they, uh, wanna, uh, and they have requirements, they review on the, for drainage and all the rest of it. And, uh, if we're going to do that, then we, we have to have a, a plat. Anybody that's going to, uh, permit the subdivision, that's what you're doing when you're regulating.
Permitting it, yeah.
Is permitting and, and permitting them to file it and to then build according to it. Uh, if we take that over, then we have to, uh.
But with, with a plat, with the plating, the county or the city could now, could not regulate, they regulate the plat, they could not, they cannot regulate the, the buildings, the type of buildings, the size of buildings, they can, the county can set, uh, setback for the property lines, but they have no control over what kind of building goes in, uh, how many buildings go in?
But they have control over where it goes, because by setback lines, by definition, that's where you are governing, uh, regulating where the buildings are. And, and once you get a plat from somebody on an application for a subdivision, and they say, I want, you, that's why you gotta have a registered surveyor. We can't do it without a registered surveyor, because otherwise, you would have competing landowners right next to another, and one of them would start with, they'd all start with the common pen, but they would have a separate, different, and they're, and those competing neighbors might have encroachments on to each other's property, unless a registered surveyor does it, that's why the county does it, and that's why I think if we were going to take on that responsibility, then we have to have, acquire a registered survey from that landlord.
Okay, well, I can, I have no doubts, I mean, I don't know, you know a whole much more than I do.
Well, but I'm not saying it can't be done the way you're talking about.
I know. I'm not asking it to be done that way, uh, I just, like I said, I don't, I still don't see a benefit to us to take on the, the subdivision. If it, if zoning was an issue, yes, because I know that would, well, that would probably address some of the issues some people have with the growth in the area. And I think it's something to like to look at, but that's only within, only within the city limits.
But if somebody comes in here and wants to, uh, take, uh, eighty-five acres, and it's coming off from somebody's property, their hundred and fifty foot section, and, and then eighty-five acres, and they're gonna put two hundred and forty houses on that, when they go to the county, the, the county's gonna let them do that, aren't they?
Pretty much.
And that's, that's, so then, is that, then we're allowing that to be, and, uh, do we want to try to prevent that kind of density of, to happen, like happened over in Staples? Or do we instead wanna have our own plan that says, if you're going to develop a subdivision on eighty-five acres, you can only have eighty-five houses, you get, you have a minimum one acre, uh, and that's a regulation, I'm not recommend, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that if you're going to keep out the big, uh, home builders and the big subdivisions and what's being built right around Sagin, we would have to have a different scheme, and we would have to say, you can't put two hundred and fifty houses on eighty-five acres, you can put eighty-five. So I want a plat that shows you've got one acre houses, and you've got drainage, and you've got utilities.
You've got access.
And you've got sidewalks.
More acres.
And you've got, and how are you going to govern, where are they gonna come out of the subdivision, and what roads are they going to impact here? And show us what you're going to do to improve the roads when they come out. Uh, just, Alan, or if Walmart comes along and says, I want to build right along here on Highway ninety, then you have to, then are we going to regulate how many driveways they've got coming out, and, or are there alternatives? Can people come back around and go back out, like if it was at the corner of eleven oh four and US ninety? And, uh, a, a big Walmart subdivision, would we require, we would probably, if we were regulating it, we might. Uh, you might, as City Commission say, the rules are, if you're gonna have a big store with five hundred and fifty people on it at one time, there's gonna have to be access coming out on eleven oh four, and there's gonna have to be access on US ninety to minimize the impacts on either one of them, those kinds of questions. If, I don't know that the county is going to care about that, they'll let Walmart just open up and, uh, and, and, and not, we're not against Walmart.
Again, with, again.
I'm just saying, we have to, we have to understand or try to minimize the impact of that, the adverse impact that comes. We love the economic impact, everybody does, but what does it do to the neighbors and the people that are trying to get their kids to school? When, uh, when Walmart employees are getting off, or the Amazon warehouse is getting off from work? I, I just think that, uh, if we leave it, if we leave it up to the county from here on, uh, then I, I, I don't think, we may not be happy with the results of what the county done so nuts.
You know what, probably, probably, there will guarantee, some people will not be happy at all.
Right.
And some people will be okay with it, and some people won't care one way or another. But it's, um, either way, subdivision regulation, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and contact, I guess, New Berlin and one of the little cities I can find that are doing their own subdivision regulations and ask them.
How much work it is.
How much work it is, yeah, what all's involved with.
I think we need to be regulating subdivisions, honestly, I think somehow, at least have some kind of say, cause if the county's the only say, then anybody could come in here, it's already happening out there.
They don't have as much, yeah, they don't have as much interest in exactly what's going on there that we do living in the community.
I know, but that's, this has to become a community.
Right.
Up on Kingsbury Road, there's like a HR Horton, I mean, like, double lights coming out.
Oh, yeah.
It's, I mean, there, it, it's all around, it's coming for us, it's coming down to us.
Traffic wise, the San Marcos.
Traffic wise, it's nuts around here.
But traffic wise, the San Marcos Loop affected Kingsbury Road, we are Kingsbury Road, while being a county road, which counties, I can't say that, we are used as a state highway over a county road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's because of the other.
Right.
Bigger government projects, and they're allowing it to dump on us without us.
Well, they're, they're using it to the very last thread of its use up, and then they'll have to do something, and they will then, you know? They're gonna, they'll run that road until there's nothing left of it, and then they'll have to put a double deck freeway over it with limited access, okay?
You're right, to, that, the question in that, if we're gonna look at it and study it, the question is to go to New Berlin and others and say,
Yeah.
how much work is it to do this, because that's the, that's another factor, if we don't have, if we don't tax our citizens.
And that was a big, a big, a big law.
You can't pay anybody.
Cause then you, you pay planners and inju. Cause then you, you pay planners and engineers to do everything. We don't have that. So how much work is it gonna take for us volunteers?
And what benefit is it really meant to us?
So, yeah, I have it on, I, I have a note also to, to talk to mayor in Staples because this nine hundred homes are putting in two hundred and forty acres is just feet outside their city limits. So it's definitely under ATJ. And they have done zoning with engineering firms. They kind of did it and then they disbanded their P and Z. You know, are they picking that back up again? Cause they've done the work and it was done. So they, they disbanded the P and Z committee. But now there's this nine hundred homes going up.
But it's then they're, it's not in their.
It's in their ETJ. It's in their ETJ. However, you know, what, what are they, what are they thinking about? Is there anything that they would like to do? Anything that they wish they had done? Anything that they're going to?
Regulating.
I don't know. I'm gonna call. I'm gonna call and say.
If they just.
Yeah, if you're.
I'm gonna check.
If they just hand it their.
Let's, let's get some input from, and see, you know, I'm not above learning from others and.
And I, yeah, I'm gonna tell you all.
Lessons learned from others.
You know, I'm not opposed, well, that's not true. I don't wanna be a hindrance. I'm not gonna stand in your way. I wanna help you find the, the information that will be of benefit and the decision will be made. Uh, but on a personal level, you know, very strongly personal property rights. Uh, you know, I don't want somebody putting in, uh, you know, two hundred, I don't want, what's, five hundred acres around me, eight hundred acres around me. I don't wanna see thirty-two thousand mobile homes surround my place. I don't want to. But if Walmart comes in and wants to buy my place, I don't want y'all telling me I can't sell it to Walmart. If someone offers me ten times the amount of money to put in another forty thousand mobile homes. If I want the money, I want the money. I mean, I don't want.
But that's what your neighbors would say to you.
I know, I know.
Do you want any say on how, once they've taken the money and gone?
But that's, that's, you know, that's because when all these people come in, eventually there will be a Walmart. And eventually it'll be a Dollar General. But none of those get built until the population density is there. They have a customer base built in. They won't, I don't care if you want it. You want it all you want to. They're not gonna build it until they know that it's self-supporting.
Right.
So, but when the people come here and they come here, all I'm saying is we try to build our community to where people don't, but it's, when you die, your children inherit it. They don't wanna live here. They have their own homes somewhere else. And they really could use the money. So they're gonna sell it. And when they sell it, you know, can I put stipulations on it? I guess I could, but I'm not going to. Cause when I give a gift, I give a gift and it's yours. You do what you want to with it.
On the issue of.
That's how it, that's how it's, that's, that's how it's going. That's how it's been doing. That's how developers make their money up. That's how they get in.
You know, but every developer, how many people have a job and support their family and buy their houses? And live their life because they have that job building all those damn houses, you know?
But they don't live where, they don't live.
No, they don't.
And they're not affected by what they've done. They live elsewhere.
The effect is, i- it's, it's, it's pretty, it's like, it, it's all part of our economy. It's all part of the world. You know, I know, I know. Regulator.
Go ahead. Sort of aside, but really on the same issue, deed restrictions. When you sell that property and you put a restriction on that sale, as in this county with so many properties and people don't realize it, I can't have hogs on my property. I'm sorry.
I know, but that's.
And, and it's amazing, these people, they don't know. Uh, that's the first thing you were supposed to look for, cause I remember when they, when the county put that in, so many. And yet, I have a lady, no, they have it just slowly.
So I think, I think, yeah, I am, I think as far as.
You know, but it's anything.
We definitely need to keep looking. We need to keep looking and learning and figuring out more about how this could affect us negatively and or positively.
Cause I, I agree with you about, I don't want to be limited in what I can do with my land. But Frank, if you, if you were zoned and all of your neighbors were zoned, agriculture and residential.
I would think that'd be great.
Then you, then everybody's gonna continue to use their property the way it always has been. But if we had a law that said, an ordinance that says, once, once you're not going to use a property for ag and residential, then you must apply for a subdivision and a zoning change to a Walmart shopping center or a battery or a refinery. And when, and only then does it become effective, the governance of it. And so, what, and if it reaches the point, Frank, you made the point that nobody's, Walmart's not coming until they see the conditions, the right density. And when they do, they're still gonna buy your property. If you wanna sell it to Walmart, there's, there, you're still gonna be able to do it cause Walmart will say, I'll spend all the money I need to develop it according to, and I'll apply for a zoning change to the City Commission and the commission will approve it.
I know.
So they can still get there. And, and, and you will be able to sell your property.
But that's, I know. So that's like, I mean, it's like, I know the, I think you said it, but we have the, the, if we could do zoning, then yeah, if you wanna do something different, you just apply for a zoning variance, you know, and we'll let you subdivide it, let your family meet. That kinda defeats the purpose. That's kinda like, well, this is the rule, but hey, we'll take care of it. Don't worry. No.
How many are aware of this times Walmart has backed off when they get down into?
Well, it's not Walmart. It's not Walmart.
More than one location.
It's not Walmart. It's, it's the expectation that you can keep this little space of Texas the same. It's already changed. It's gonna continue to change, you know? I mean, it takes a while and unfortunately you get old and you retire and you die and you don't see the end result. Because it has changed so much, it's not your world anymore. It's not what it, it's not what it was when you grew up. Austin, Texas, one eighty-three and, and, and Lamar was a four-way stop sign when I was a kid. Run my bicycle through there to go drive downtown. And now I get lost just trying to get to the intersection. It's huge. And that happened in sixty years. It took, it was, and it was worse. It's there now, but it was, it, it happened before that. But it does happen. And people come and, like I said, business, you want, you want business. Business lives for everybody. We want, we want, and we want factories, jobs. That's what you're, that's what you're getting. It, they come, they live here, they want a job. They want a library and they want a job. Build a plant. They get a job. They're happy. And everybody is just doing the best they can to get to this life. And like I said, if I was gonna sell my place today, it would be to somebody that I thought would keep it the way it is. You know, and they would tell me yes, and we'd sign the favor and I'd move and I'd call and say, how's everyone playing? Oh, you know what they do with your place? Yeah, I said, well, son of a gun.
You can't, you can't control it. Once you sell it.
So, yeah. And, and I don't, you know, I understand, I understand. I don't want it next to me, but I keep thinking, it's just a little thing. So like I said, right down the street from me, there's, the subdivision was supposed to be ten or fifteen acre lots and it's supposed to be pretty much agricultural residential. And then they sold, they started selling them. And the name of the subdivision changed. And I said, oh, different people, somebody else bought it. And well, now the ten or ten acre lots became two acre lots. And then it, it is what it is. But one of the lots, I guess, you know, it, I say, wanna make you proud of it. They're recycling metal.
Yeah, I know which one you're talking about.
They're recycle, there is a recycling project. And that is good for the economy, right? And good for the e, uh, environment.
Whoa, 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 be careful with the environment.
Well, no, but it's good. It's, it's a recycling program. And there are people that live there and they, and they make their living doing that. And, you know, the guy who owns it doesn't live here. He's, it's his business though.
All the neighbors around.
But all the neighbors have to listen.
They can't sleep cause there's metal banging at four A M.
I'm almost a mile away from him and I hear it.
Really? Wow, wow.
And, and.
And he doesn't live here.
And I'm just like.
But it's his property, but.
But it's, it's a business.
So it's a two acre property that was sold?
Oh, I, we'll have the acreages on it for sure. Maybe bigger than that. Cause he's, he bought it pretty early. Uh, but yeah, it's a recycling and it's a metal.
But I, if a businessman wants it, you should pay the price which includes what you're taking away from your neighbors.
I agree. You have to get back to your community if you're gonna take.
Right. It's not his community. It's a business.
Well, his business is taking, so it should get back.
It's given back. It's created jobs.
We should only let businesses.
It's in, it's in recycling metal. It's not just dumping it and burying it and letting it crust. It's recycling it. Uh, I don't know.
If I lived next to it, I don't think I'd be as.
But it, no, I wouldn't be, no. So it'd be like, well, I guess we're gonna have to move. We'll just put up with it.
Yeah.
Plant some more trees or put a little sound break there. I complain about them to them once in a while, you know, let them know. Can't you keep that quiet?
Yep.
But anyway.
Well, I, it's, it sounds like it's still something.
Yes, it's, we're gonna, we're gonna look into it.
Okay.
It may be the answer.
It may be.
It may be. I'm not gonna complain.
Item number ten, discuss and consider Kingsbury Development Committee. This has your name on it, Frank.
Yes, because there was some discussion on the message board about what happened to it, kinda. Um, so the Kingsbury Development Committee, uh, kinda dwindled in membership and participation and kinda lost the drive and direction. Except, uh, became, well, the Developmental Committee and Development Committee. And we were having those programs, different, um, people in the area, informative and educational, outreach, yeah. And it was kinda good. And we have an issue now with the, using our facility for that purpose. And we were down to just one member besides us in the committee. And that member decided to resign also. So we just kinda closed the committee.
So do you need official?
No.
No, we just, no.
I'm just asking.
But I mean, there were people, what happened to it and it's, well, that's kinda what happened. For the interest, the drive kinda just dwindled. Uh, people got tired of participating or chose not to or found other interests. And then the last remaining person that was really enthusiastic about it, lost her drive too, I guess. But she resigned and, uh, she has other stuff to do also. So we just stopped. Didn't mean it's gone forever. I liked what we were doing there at the end for sure.
Yeah, we ran into the, the whole issue again with the.
Insurance and the building.
What we can do with the property.
Which might be resolved when we can get our own space. I mean, our own space is supposed to be a community center. And I think that I loved what Elena was doing with the community and bringing people in. That was fantastic.
That back, for sure. And we're looking now at maybe, uh, possible zoning. And we need a planning and zoning committee for that too. We do.
Alright, so it's, so this was just kinda like, it's not like, it was, it's not like it was, um, uh, it's just.
Shut down, locked up and throwing away the door.
It's just basically on hiatus, um, until we have more control over a, a space that's, yeah, a facility.
I'd like to say something about, I printed out some of these message board things. And I, I've been out of town and working a ton and haven't really been following this. And I'm kinda dismayed at some of the people who've been super negative on here and not put their names up. Um, and it's like, come to a meeting. We're all volunteers here. We're trying our best. Don't just shade somebody and, and, and yell at them on an email when your face isn't even shown and your name's not even on there. It's like, don't be a hater, man. Just like, we're all trying here. We're a small community. We're all working together. We need to work with love. We need to work with understanding. We're trying the best for all of us. So like, somebody just getting online and typing a bunch of hate out, what good does that do? I don't see the good it does. And I would encourage people to not do that.
Yeah.
If you have something negative to say, come to the meeting. Talk like a person, like a real person with real words, face to face.
The message, message board, I don't, I don't think of it like as Facebook online stuff, you know.
There was a lot of negative stuff and I was just like, really guys, what is going on?
But it's like, it's, it's like.
It's not helpful.
Meeting people in the bread aisle at H P where you stop and you talk about, you know, all this stuff. And they haven't been talking about the topic that they talked about. But they wanted to vent and they expressed their opinion. And was it pleasant? Hmm, no, but.
But they also didn't say who they were, which is also kinda like, say who you are if you're gonna vent, you know? If you're gonna yell, if you're gonna call people out for stuff, you should say who you are.
And say the same thing.
That's better.
Who are you? None of your business.
It's face to face.
But that, yeah, it's.
We're out here, we're volunteering, we're doing our best for the community. And I think that, I just hope that people who are writing random emails in the dark of night with no name on their thing, you know, think about the fact that they're not doing the hard work volunteering down here. They're not answering the emails and doing all the work. And it's like, come on. You wanna run for office? Run for office. Do some work. Don't just write an email that's hateful.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, it's a way for some people to just.
To vent.
I don't know that they're actually venting. I think it was kind of just Mean Girl Facebook. Yeah.
Maybe so, maybe so.
I think it was Mean Girl Facebook too.
But they said what they said. Some people were a little more calm and rational. Some were excited and, and, and had a like an agenda to address. You answered a lot of questions.
Yes, surely I, I did like your responses. They were thorough and.
And that's all, I mean, that's all you, it's like, well, yeah.
But, you know, it's.
It's not defensive. It's like explanations.
And I'm sure Frank, you were good too with explaining.
So I mean, as long as there's a dialogue going, even if it's a crappy dialogue you don't like, you just.
Yeah, I felt the need to respond once, but after that I was not, I did not feel the need to, to respond.
And that's a point that needs to be made. If, if you do not get a response, hey, each one of these people have super obligation outside here. Do they have time to respond to every email that comes in? Thank you. That's all I had to say.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I was out of town doing a huge job and sorry I missed, I'm speaking of, actually, yeah, we've just been so busy. And then like to read all this hatred, it's like, guy, what? Excuse me?
I wouldn't call it hatred.
There were a few, there's, I mean, I have, there are.
I think that's male female perception. Not, not saying these were wrong, no.
Nasty and saying things that are not necessary, hurtful things that are not necessary. And we're a small community. And you know, we should all be aware of each other and be nice to each other. It's not hard to be nice. Just be nice. Be nice.
Thank you. It was, yeah, it was, yeah, like I said, I felt the need to, to respond, you know? But after that, it was, I, I didn't feel the need to, to, to respond anymore to that.
It's not, it's not something you can have conversation on.
No, it's like, you know, responding to anonymous on.
Express your opinion. And it's not a conversation thing. It's very difficult to do.
I mean, I, I can even, you know, block. But I thought, you know, it's an option to block. I mean, it, you know, like, we've had like a whole page of Russian on there before, which I deleted. You know, and we, we do have the option to, to monitor, you know, before we allow posts. But I thought, well, you know, then it comes off as being a perception of being where.
Closed.
Yeah, that were of, of, of silencing a voice out there, which I don't, I don't wanna do either. So it's out there and.
Negative people have, do a good job at making themselves look bad. So no worries on that front.
I mean, I feel like, you know, if people feel that they need to vent their frustrations on there, I don't think there's really anything that we can justifiably do about it.
Yeah.
But I also feel like if you want to make a productive change, you're gonna have to put your name on it. You know, if there's not a name on it, it's just not gonna, even helping we even know what, who we're talking about. How do we even know that this is in our community?
Yeah, maybe it's somebody from Staples or something like that. We don't, is that a San Antonio person? I don't know who this person is.
Yeah, it was.
And many of them didn't even live in that.
And a lot of, a lot of it just don't appear to be.
Going anywhere. No, it's not.
Yeah, and a lot of them admitted they didn't even live in our community. So it's like, well, where are you living then? In Austin? Like, where, where are you? Boston?
Well, you know, those are the ones that I just go, okay, next. I don't even, nothing. It, it doesn't affect me. It doesn't, it's not gonna change anything. You know, it's like, well, you feel that bad. It's like, if you really wanna run for office, calm down.
Come on now. Please. It's volunteer. You won't get paid. Neither do we. Come on now, please, it's volunteer, you won't get paid, neither do we.
I would hope that you would attend a few meetings to kinda know what's going on here before you jump in and decide you're gonna change it all, which you can, you know.
But I, but I mean, there was just obvious, just throwing, just that, like, apparent, apparently you're one of the ones that is in the clique.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That we're, we're apparently writing checks to you, yeah, we're just handing out money, money to you.
For trying to have a profit arts organization that helps people.
I don't.
So it, a lot, a lot of it was just, just.
It's just negative and it's not helpful, and we're trying to work around here, and we're trying to get things done, and.
It was just negative, not even information, it was just, putting something negative out there in the airspace and, you know, maybe hate word, I might get some people to believe it.
You just go past it.
No, I wanted, I wanted to bring up. I wanted. Yeah, and it's not.
There is, there is, there is some good positive stuff, and there is good opinion in there, there's not just all hateful, there's a couple that were not very pleasant at all. But there's still some, even the people that were in disagreement with maybe the way they perceive things happen here, still made some pretty good points, I thought.
And there were some points in there.
Yeah, and it's like, that has to be discussed.
But I, I would, that, the reason I'm bringing it up, and again, I, I had to read all these, it's just like, when you approach, this is not Facebook, these are real people, this is a small community. If you're gonna write some anonymous hateful thing on there, just be, stop for a second and think about your neighbors.
Yeah.
Who are the people that you see around you? Do you really want to do this in your community? Like, is that how you wanna live? Cause that's not how I like to live.
Yeah.
I like to live with people around me that I enjoy and I support and I might disagree with, but I support them.
Yeah.
And I help them.
Yeah, this is.
That's what I thought Kingsbury was, so I guess some people don't think that, but I think that still.
Well, we don't even know where they're from, so.
Yeah. Anyway, just wanted to add a little thing on there.
Yeah. Okay, uh, so yes, KDC has not been, it's just on hiatus, and then when we move into, uh, uh, facilities that we can better, control and schedule than we're looking at bringing something like that back. Okay, item number eleven, discuss and consider creating a city structure and elections page on the city website.
That was also my takeaway from the New Berlin City's website.
Uh-huh.
Uh, they had a page called City Structure and Elections.
Oh, yeah, cause our elections are coming up, aren't they?
And, and they list, they list all of the officers and all of the, uh, staff of the city. But the officers, they list their current term and their election date for the next term.
Yeah, I mean, we do have that page, and we can certainly add.
Yeah, that would, I would, yeah.
And when their, uh, uh, election, when their current, the current term is, right, we don't have term limits, but we have, we have terms.
Their current, current term. The next election cycle. Yeah.
Uh, so I, we can definitely add that.
And that, yeah, that was one thing.
We don't have any, you know, staff other than Jessica, I mean, all of our pictures are up there and everything.
Yeah, uh, we have everything except the.
The terms.
Expression of.
This is, this is the election term, and, and then when we get close to.
Yeah. And that's something I thought about adding multiple times in the past, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I have to, yeah, and when we get closer to the election date, give guidance to how you can, uh, request to be on the ballot, file to be on the ballot, yeah.
Speaking of, like, if we, uh, what's our population these days? Is it increasing?
That is something that we, you know, it's, it's not the easiest thing to, we can count rooftops, you know?
But inhabitants is a whole nother issue.
But, yeah, yeah.
At what point do we get, have to have more city commissioners?
It, well, it comes up at the census.
Yeah. That is based on the census.
It comes up every, it's based on the census, so, which is every ten years.
That's every ten years.
So that doesn't mean that we can't, you know, guesstimate, you know, um, in between, you know?
Do you have any idea when the next census comes out?
It's every ten years on the zero, so it's five more years.
On the zero. Okay. Cool.
So.
So by then, I might.
More information, did you get it?
Yeah, yeah, I like that it's something simple.
Raise the question about Brooklyn as a population effect or the structure or anything, I think, and I'm, but I'm going back to ten years ago when we formed the city, and my memory's not that good, but I think that at the time, the local government code said that once you get to be three thousand people, you, you can no longer be a class three municipality, which is what we are now.
Class C, yeah.
And I think, I, so I think that automatic, it may not be automatic, uh, when we get to three thousand, uh, we're probably going to become a, it will become a class.
A or B.
Type A.
A or B, isn't it? What are, we class three? I think, I think it's class C, yeah, that's what we.
We're, we're type C. Yeah, we're type C. Oh, actually, we could go to home rule.
I think you have to have five thousand to be home rule.
Yeah.
And then.
Yeah, we were far enough from it that it wasn't too much of a.
Home rule sounds too much like, uh, um, God, my age is showing in my brain lacking.
I, I, I'm, I.
Uh, homeowners association.
Oh, well, I eat your egg kind of thing.
Yes, there we go, that's just too much, too much homeowners, too much conflict with the state.
You know, uh, let me, let me see if there's something.
But it's supported their city, so.
In the population number, you don't have to wait for the census, if you've done annexations, you've pretty much increased your population.
Yeah.
And that has not been taken into account, so it's a question, Allison, as far as where is the population now?
Yeah.
But the census is only gonna tell us the population increase in the area postal region, the postal.
Civilly limits. Oh, the postal region is about fifteen hundred.
I meant not postal, I meant the census district.
Oh, yeah.
Census district is not the same as our, the importance, that's not an automatic, they don't associate one on one.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
So we don't know what that population is, but I'm pretty sure just from looking at the rooftops when I drive around here, that we're not at three thousand.
No, no, no.
But we're probably more than seven hundred and fifty.
Could be.
Yeah.
Could be. I'm gonna take a look.
If we encounter ETJ, we, we might be getting, we might be doing something there.
Alright.
No, it's a dream, it's a plan, it's a plan in the future.
Item number twelve, discuss and consider Texas Government Accountability Association meeting recap, this is again Frank's next.
And this is again someone else's report.
I think I meant to say this was me.
Okay.
That's okay.
Hi, Frank. And if you, if you notice, one of the things that TGAA, uh, mentioned when they kind of reviewed our, was they wanted a, a kinda titled City of Kingsbury and kind of the date and, that it says monthly check report on it, so that's, that's why we have a title on our page, I was like, that's easy enough to do.
Yeah, that was a quick easy one.
It, it did, it said like monthly check report just up here.
But of who?
They wanted like a title on it.
Then they wanted City of Kingsbury, it didn't really, yeah.
Yeah, you have to have your stamp, which is.
I mean, you know, um.
So, yeah, definitely, there you go, easy now.
Yeah, um, I had this meeting, uh, with, uh, Anthony from TGAA, Texas Government Accountability Association, and we, they gave me this really quite large spreadsheet of, they'd been kinda working out like what, you know, what they want to require essentially, and what that would look like, and so, so he gave me this spreadsheet with all of these, uh, compliance stuff to, to go through, and then we met on Zoom and talked about them. And, um, and I've written a list of some of the key, I mean, you know, a lot of these things we're already doing fine with, and so I don't see any point in talking about it. But these are some things I thought maybe we should talk about, um, so, um, uh, well, so Anthony's gonna look at, um, budget report, there's, there's some stuff about, um, well, there's something that's, there's something that talks about a citywide efficiency audit that we are clearly, um, exempt from, but then there's something that's a financial audit that here it says every year, and, um, we've already talked to them about it, uh, that, that's not really financially, uh, viable for us, so he's kind of.
That's expensive enough.
And I have actually talked to several accountants, uh, seeing about getting an audit, and we do have a, a minimal amount in the budget for an audit, but, uh, from the accountants that I have talked to before, it's, you know, thousands of dollars for that, which does not really fit into our small budget for a small city with no property tax. Uh, and I've talked to several accountants recently, uh, about, you know, performing an audit, so we can, you know, have that checked off and have that, make sure that, uh, people realize that we're, you know, at, all the monies that go through are, were accounted for. And it was always a, you need a, a CPA firm that does municipal and will certify it, which is, they, they wouldn't touch, these are CPAs, they wouldn't touch it.
No, you have to go through a city place.
Right, the only thing I remember, and I think the local government code, I'm not sure, uh, some, some legislation, I'm sure, the requirement for that audit had to be done by an auditor, but it could not be anybody that was staff or elected official of the city.
Correct.
We went through this before.
Right.
Didn't, didn't have to be a CPA, didn't have to be a mathematician, didn't have to do anything except.
Correct, correct. And that's what I also brought up, but I think they're used to you, to dealing with larger cities.
Yeah.
And, you know, we have, uh, you know, some people have more in their checking account than we do.
Uh, question, this is.
So, it's, but it.
So, I mean, we don't need a CPA.
No, we don't.
Well, we have to find somebody who will do it then, to.
To look at it, yeah.
I have, I have talked to non-CPAs, and I have talked to CPAs, CPAs are the ones that say you need to have a one day, is certified for a municipal.
But now we're saying a specialty certified public accountant is like a municipality certified.
Right, now, now we're talking about it, we're, we're expensive, right, we have to have a specialty.
My question. Right.
I still, I have, I, the only thing I've ever found, just casual reading of legislation and local government codes, is that the audit cannot be done by a member of the city's staff or an elected official of the city. There is no stipulate, that was the only stipulation about the auditor.
Right. Only requirements was that, yeah.
Did it say, did it say anything about it had to be a CPA, did it say it had to be a mathematician, did it say it had to be a banker, not, not an account executive or a mortgage lender, or a fireman, or a, a, a farmer, it just said it couldn't be staff or elected official.
Yeah, I'm sure there are people out there that would do that, but I have not found.
But, no, there aren't any people out there that are farmers, engineers, bankers, that are going to do an audit for you, they're not going to.
They can do an audit.
Why not?
You go ask them, go to the bank president in Saguine and ask him, would you do an audit for us, and they'll, they'll laugh you out of the room. Uh, because that, nobody does them except auditors, and, uh, and if you did an audit and you submitted it by CPAs in the big firm, and you pay them fifteen thousand a year to do it, they send it to the comptroller, and the comptroller looks at it and writes back and says, your, your audit does not count, that's not a certified public accountant on my list of municipal CPAs, therefore that is not in compliance with our requirements. And so that's how they make money, that's why we don't do it, because there is nobody out there.
What about, uh, I mean, does Art know somebody, they have a small town, or others, again, if you're gonna ask small towns, I mean, are there other, where are they?
Well, ask, yeah.
Maybe there's somebody who has a CPA license that's willing to do it for us, that's just a local small town person.
But now they, they tax their people, um, ad valorem, and then they pay a firm, a CPA firm, ten thousand dollars a year to do the audit. I, I think that's what Art's gonna tell you, and, uh, that's what they do, and that's your only choice, so, uh. You know, and I don't mean to go beyond the scope of this, but, you know, I've had my own, and, uh, I've had my own reservations about this accountability outfit, because I look on them as just big government, and they're big auditors, big monitors, Anthony's a nice guy, I've met him, but he is simply an auditor who, a monitor, I'm excuse, they, they call them monitors. And the comptroller's office that has them, the general, Department of Agriculture, the Department of Commerce in Austin, all have offices full of monitors, who, after they give you a grant, and say you can make loans to, uh, businesses to start up, economic development loans, once you do it and it's going for two or three years, they always come in, in my experience, in the city of Three Rivers and the county of Karnes, they send in monitors who say, the people that you made loans to do not meet our requirements, and they tell you after the fact, you got a grant and you made a loan to a business, but it does not meet our parameters, and you just, uh, you got paid back sixty thousand dollars under this grant by the, uh, business owner, and you have to give that money back to the state of Texas, because, and they will try to take the money back, because the monitors go down and say, and they're getting, I mean, God bless, you know, somebody's gotta be a monitor, but I've had fights with monitors, and gone down and they come in and they tell us, the mayor, uh, you had, you need to give us back the sixty thousand or the hundred thousand, and so I have to go down and meet with them and say, okay, exactly why do you say so? And then you write a letter back to them and say, you're monitored, you, you are incorrect, you are not correct, this was done right, and if you, uh, we appeal this, we appeal this decision to give it back, and, uh, to the state of Texas, and when you do, it automatically invokes the Department of Commerce or the Department of Agriculture commissioner, or the comptroller of the state, has to then listen to that appeal, and we say, I'm taking this over your head, and going back to, and I want the full commission to come in here, and when you do that, and you spend hours and hours of professional time fighting them, then, in my experience, they always back down and say, you're right, the commissioner doesn't have time to listen to this, so we're going to negate that, uh, so that's what, I mean, this is what, and I told Anthony something like that when they first came down here, and you remember that agreement with them, said that they're going to be able to tell us where we can invest our Clifford funds and all of our other grants, they, and we're going to come look at it annually and see who are you investing that money with, and if it's not on the attorney general's, uh, approved list of who the attorney general thinks, uh, you should be investing your money with, then you're going to have to give the money back to us. And, and we told them, AAG, at the time, what we told them, or at least I, I listed and said, that's, I, I'm going to advise the commission to reject this agreement, I wouldn't do that, and, uh, and they backed down and they changed the agreement. But now, and so they backed down and gave us a little bit more independence, and, uh, and got the big government off our back, but now they're opening the door, we've only been in the, for a year, a year and a half, and they're already starting, and that's what this process is. My, and my recommendation, the commission is, is going to do what it thinks, but I would recommend that you take that information, that spreadsheet, and email it to each of the commissioners, so that we can study exactly what Anthony and the T A G G wants us to do or is questioning, and, uh, and, and the mayor needs to know, and because they are, the next step is going to be that Anthony's going to write to you and say, we don't think what you've done is in compliance with our agreement, and, uh, and, and then they're going to want something back.
How, how, how long are we in an agreement with them for? I thought it was a year by year?
I thought it was that will.
Uh, my, I just, I thought also I would.
I just think we ought to be careful, I'm not saying, and I'm. I just think we ought to be careful, I'm not saying, and I'm not questioning the decision of this commission to, to, to go into that agreement, I don't mean that at all. But it does have risks and, and I've dealt with people like those auditors. And that's what Anthony is, and see, he, he thinks because we want a big CPA firm to look at and audit it every year because, and, well, I'm not. I, I think they're all tied together, I think it's all part of a. But anyway, it's big government.
Kinda like.
It's a big government and, you know, we already told him there's some things that's none of your business. And I think now they're coming in the back door and saying, wait a minute, we need more information from you people, but.
Well, maybe we need to pull up that contract and see what we signed and, and take a look if he's insisting that we get an audit that we can't afford, that we already told him.
Saying that we get an audit, I, you know, I, I brought, I, you know, I looked through this thing and I was like, what about this? And he was like, right, we talked about that, let me do some research. So I was kind of expecting him to come back and say, like, you're right, we don't have to do that. I mean, I'm actually supposed to meet with him again on the twelfth, so that was the.
My, my suggestion, my advice is that I think you should to simply respond to him that I have provided your comments and your spreadsheet. To the commission and they are considering your comments. And otherwise, you, you don't make decisions for the city and dealing with a government agency. Now, this is not, this, this is really not a government agency, but they are acting like it. And I think they are big government and what his concerns are, are things that need to be known by the commissioners. And the city commissioners need to study it and be prepared to respond and limit their response to, this is the same thing, if you went in to see your CPA and you got a notice from the IRS, you're being audited. Well, you gotta go to the auditor, I mean, you gotta go to your CPA and say, what do I answer, what do I say? Because you start getting into financial problems with the comptroller and everything else. Although I don't know about the connection of T A G G to them. And, but I do know what monitors and auditors do for the state agencies. And that's exactly what they, they do, is they send out reports to you a year and a half or two afterwards and say, you're, you're failing and the following matters. And so I think we need, I think we should be careful. And I may be overstating it, I don't mean, I don't mean to overstate it. And I certainly don't mean to be critical of, of my city commission because I just wanna protect.
Yeah. Yeah, well, you've had more experience with monitors and stuff than we have, so, yeah.
I mean, we wanna do the right thing.
Sure that we don't go down.
Yeah.
Okay, one more time, what did he, what did he say? Or what did y'all? That's okay.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like I kinda started with the most controversial thing and it, and it's. I mean, what this point says specifically. The city shall conduct a citywide financial audit every year, which audit shall be conducted by an outside independent firm. The scope of the audit shall be to engage in fraud detection, affirm the accuracy of all financial reporting and confirm proper accounting procedures are utilized. Do you want me to continue?
Yeah, that's really, really long.
Question.
It's not too much longer, I'm about halfway through this part. The draft audit report and the final audit report shall be posted to the city's website and the lead partner on the audit shall be made available for a Q and A session with city residents and taxpayers within sixty days of the final audit reports completion. No firm shall perform such audit for more than three years in succession and no more than six times in ten years. Number action, conduct citywide financial audit each fiscal year and provide results per this policy item post most recent financial audit to city website. And then I said, so this one, we are not exempt based on our small budget, question mark? And then on action items, he wrote Anthony to research G A S B standards for A C F R, A C F R, annual comprehensive financial reports for the city. These are two related things.
Okay, so he's gonna look into it.
Yeah, he's supposed to look into it and I did kinda think that the outcome was gonna be him saying, you're right, y'all don't have to do it. But I, I don't know, I mean.
More than opening up a check register.
Yeah, well, and our budget is just so much smaller, you know, all of these things are kinda designed for a larger city.
One of those things that he said, that I heard you say, was that that auditing firm, after it conducts a comprehensive audit, must meet with city residents for feedback. Well, your audit bill just went from fifteen thousand to thirty thousand when they have to send minions from Austin, little accountants, to come down here and go find people and interview them, like those grant people. We're trying to say, well, you're gonna have to go find the people and we're all gonna ask them. Well, you can imagine what a bunch of state CPAs are going to cost to come down and do it. That's the kinda thing I'm talking about. The, the law does not require, the Texas law does not require that our auditor should have to go interview people for community feedback. That's because of the expense, the, the common sense, well, the legislature sometimes has common sense. But anyway, that, it's a common sense approach, is don't put requirements in there that just cost money for unnecessarily. Well, that, that's what he's asking you to do, is spend money unnecessarily to get a report that says, oh, and I went and talked to all of the people in the city of Kingsbury and they, they think that the report looks fine, the financial report. But anyway, to get there, again, I apologize for interrupting you.
Oh, I mean, I, these seem like serious things to think about.
Yeah, what were those other, there's other issues?
So, the check report thing is done. Oh, this was something, they want us to do a vote to go into executive session, seems easy to do. I don't know, they just, yeah, I mean, even though it's like on the agenda already. Well, what he said was, it gives all of the commissioners the opportunity to, like, I mean, to say, this is why I don't think we should go into executive session for. I mean, you know, I just read an article about how like Lockhart, everyone, like sixty-eight percent of the population voted to legalize marijuana in the city of Lockhart. And then the city council went into executive session and voted inside of executive session to not, not do it. And I thought that was gonna be illegal.
Okay, we didn't really, we're going squarely, let's not go squarely. This association, if I recall right, and also as far as what you said, we were supposed to be out of one of the things, I think that's one of the things, if you look in past minutes, discussions. The other thing is, it's only the city of Midland and the city of Kingsbury.
Two of us, right, we have some power here.
So, you have to ask. So, you have to ask, have there been more members joined and you're going by their opinion? Or is this his personal opinion and we want to get out of it? I mean, he had very, our lawyer said the best thing, that each one of you look at that, and that, those would be the questions. Not executive session, not, not executive session. Hey, our court created this, but we didn't.
It would still be the city council saying.
The commissioners.
I mean, I guess what I'm, why I brought up this Lockhart story is that there was one, one council member who said, we should do a vote next meeting because we never should have done this, you know. If, if they had done this vote, it would have given him a specific time to say, I don't think we should be going into executive session right now. And even if he's outvoted, he, he had a specific time to say, say that. That's the point that Anthony made about it.
Well, that's what we need to know more about is because the way he's explained that in that spreadsheet, or, well, I don't know where the example came from. But the example of Lockhart is, is really off point because we have never, never gone into an executive session and voted in an executive session.
No, you come out of executive session.
Out of executive session and say, we have now discussed this in executive session. And then we rehash it again and say, okay, we're gonna vote now, and it's all open in public. So it sounds like he's beginning to question what, the way we conduct executive sessions. And I don't know who he means you should have a vote on whether, I thought he said you should have a vote on whether to go into executive session.
Yeah, that's.
What is that, a city election for the city and all the residents to?
That's what it sounded like, didn't it? We should vote to go into executive. No, we predetermined that we're gonna go into executive session because it's a deliberation. And I believe we're following the Open Meetings Act pretty closely.
Yeah.
And I don't see any issue.
Well, maybe we should, I think maybe we should.
It was a weird ask and I just thought it seemed kind of like, what is, why? But, but I also felt like, eh, I mean, you know, what, how long does it take for three people to say, yes, let's go in executive session?
There's one other point that I was gonna make and I've had, I climbed, I know I climbed on my soapbox and stayed up here way too long tonight. But even, I don't mean to, but everything that I've said about what, what I'm worried about and concerned about coming. On the other hand, Allison and Dennis make a good point. But probably the reason they're never gonna do that is because there's only two members. And we do have power that they have to be very careful about this, or we just pull out of the association.
And then there is a one.
And there's not one.
So Anthony is, I've always said this, and I don't mean anything personal, but monitors and auditors have to justify their existence. They are paid a lot of money by, by taxpayers of Texas to do this. And if they don't come up with deficiencies in the way these things are regulated and governed and administered, they're not doing their job. And so they justify their existence by saying, you're not doing things the right way. But that's limited, there are, this one is limited, we're not dealing with the Department of Commerce. We're dealing with something that just Midland and Kingsbury belong to. So they have to be careful about what they're considering.
Odessa, by the way, not Midland. Yeah, I mean, they're not, they're not going to get a lot of, of good, of good publicity from Kingsbury if they're requiring things like this, you know, for, you, for, for the very small city. We're not just a small city, we're a very small city.
Film every single time.
It's not.
The other things that we, because it's important.
Yeah, I think we have here.
Anthony came down, he was not the first one to come down. But the second meeting we had with Martin Ross, Anthony, and Anthony was here.
Yeah.
He was a very nice guy.
We were talking about type C, type A, you know, earlier on. You know, some of this really folds into that type, type C, type A, home rule, you know, type cities. It's like, a very small city has very limited budget amounts that they can spend on something like an audit, and we just don't have those kinda funds. You know, I mean, I'm not saying that there's not some kind of number or I would give up my life in order to embezzle some, but it, it would require more commas than what we have. So, I'm not willing to give up my life, you know, to, to funnel some money out of the city of Kingsbury. But, but it's still not, it, it's not enough there to justify a huge audit expense for us.
I, I like the concept, I like the concept of this governmental accountability association from the beginning. That's a good idea, now, in practical purpose, it wasn't fitting us and they made some changes. Well, if they're gonna make some more changes that don't fit us, we have to, it's like, this doesn't fit us. We're not just a class C city in Texas, we're also.
A liberty city.
A liberty city, that's our cons, that's not our concept, but it's our belief and our, our, what we'd like to see based on what a liberty city was proposed. And, no, it's, we're not business as usual, not standard state or governmental. Here, this is how we do things, no, this is not how we do things. And it's, it makes no sense, it's no, no common sense to it.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, yeah, I like that, that it, we have to do what makes sense.
Yeah.
For.
We wanna be open and accountable to anybody as we possibly can, but not break the bank.
Right.
We're not gonna spend our entire budget to do these things.
To the city as a whole.
Yeah, yeah.
Those people at T A G G, they don't, they don't even know what our budget is. I mean, he reads that every time, but they're not thinking, they're not thinking that this city only has three thousand dollars or.
This is the way you're supposed to do it, this is what makes, no, find a different way because, but anyway, what else?
Okay, let's see, there is. I mean, the one thing was easy enough, that was just getting better heading on the, on the check report, so that was easy enough. These other ones.
Synopsis.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, okay, they want a, an org chart of our city structure. I pointed him to the page where all the, and, and he was like, yeah, well, like, it's supposed to be like, this is the top thing. I mean, it's a pretty simple little chart, I mean, there's only like five of us or whatever.
We don't have any staff that reports to anybody and, and nobody reports to the mayor. I mean, we're all part of the city.
I, I mean, honestly, because it's getting late, set, go through it, send it to us, let's all read it, let's think about it. And then next meeting, we decide whether we pull out of this thing or we tell it that we're not gonna do certain things.
That's more of a bigger city item there. It's more of a bigger city item than this org chart thing. Yeah.
Well, hopefully, he's gonna come back and say, that's okay.
The whole thing is written as if it's for a bigger city than that. Yes, yes. So that is just an overall issue.
What Sam said, just, you're gonna, you pass the information on to us?
And your next meeting, you said, is on the twelfth, right now, it's scheduled for the twelfth. Yes, yes, okay.
And the only, only question I have at this moment is, before we actually see it and talk about, think about it, has he made any adjustments to his opinion about what we need to do on those things that he insisted?
Yeah, I mean, you know, there was some stuff, yeah, like, I don't know. The, the check report, you know, like, he was like, oh, you need a, I don't know. This was on the previous meeting you had with him, that was less, I didn't have this whole spreadsheet in front of me at the time, but he was like, we need to, you need to be posting like budgets online and then, and it was, it was kinda cool because, you know, in November, Shirley was like, let's start posting these check reports online. And so I had just posted the November one when he was like, you really need something like this online. And then I was like, oh, well, here, what about this? And he was like, this is great, I think just if you just put city of Kingsbury on it, you know, so, so that was cool. And great timing and thank you, Shirley. But, I don't know, I mean, you know, the thing is like.
Um, but, um, I don't know, I mean, you know, the thing is, like, Anthony is such a nice guy, and so, like, I, I was reading this spreadsheet, you know, before our meeting, and I was like, whoa, whoa, you know? And then when you're talking to him, he's like, oh, well.
But again, let's not, Sam, like Sam says, he is a monitor.
This is that.
I, I think we should go through it, I think we should each highlight what we, what we have questions about. Send it back to you before your meeting on the 12th, individually, obviously, because we can't, we'll be on the same email.
Right.
And, um, then you can do what you want with it, and maybe use a little pressure, being like, hey, we cannot do this, we will have to pull out of your thing.
And you won't.
If you want to insist on us doing these things, we would like to be a part of this, but.
It's like, when we read.
I'm not gonna push it that far, that fast, that hard.
When we read, when we read the original agreement, we said, well, these, these are things that we really would like to see change on here because we are a very small city. I think the same thing could apply there.
Yeah.
We're a very small city, that is not something, we need to modify that part if, if we are able to, to imply, or eliminate that part for a very small city.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna wreck their, their plan, their design for what they're gonna make accountability in, in municipalities for, but we do wanna adjust it to where it makes.
Adjust it.
I mean, maybe they could say for cities with budgets of over five hundred thousand.
Yeah, it is like, they put an exemption in this one about the efficiency audit, that's like, uh, if the city has an annual budget of two million or less.
Oh, yeah.
For any year, blah, blah, then you don't have to do the efficiency base.
So, yeah, we need another exemption.
I don't know why they put it here, and they didn't put it here, you know?
Yeah.
Um.
It's too far, too long ago, right?
Okay, so we'll, we'll put that out there.
Would it make sense for Sam to get in on this Sam meeting?
Well, I think where Sam comes in is, that's why it's the commission that has to decide.
Right.
What is problematic and what is not, and in conjunction with your lawyer, you decide how to respond. And we respond very professionally in writing, just like Frank says, we're not gonna wreck the train, we're not blowing up the train. You're just gonna write back and say, I don't think you are correct in this, we, we haven't done anything wrong. And auditors and monitors, just so you'll know, they are very adept at, they have a meeting with you in the city of Three Rivers, and they come away and say, okay, I appreciate the explanation, this looks good. They go back to Austin, ten days later, I get a letter from the commissioner herself that says, uh, you know, this, uh, we still think this is all wrong. And then I say, okay, lady, call the whole commission in, because we're appealing, and under the administrative code in Texas, if I appeal your monitor's decision, it has to be considered, you have to listen to us, uh, your whole commission. And so they, you, they're very nice, you know, per- personal meeting, and then they go back and write nasty letters.
I really didn't mean to say that because he was nice, it shouldn't influence anything.
No, and I, and I don't mean, again, I don't mean to lecture to you, I'm, I'm just, uh, but this.
You're the voice of experience, talking.
Yes.
This, this is just, uh, uh, again, let the commission consider, and you tell Anthony that, uh, that the commission is considering your comments. They will decide, and, uh, you will hear from us, and that's all you need to say, because you can, right, and they'll review it, and they may say, say, you know, we need to write a long letter, uh, and tell them what we're gonna do, what we're not gonna do, what's wrong, what's not wrong. But anyway, that's what I would recommend you do, is, uh, treat this as an audit, and, uh, and, and will respond carefully, reasonably and carefully. And as you said, after we look at all of it and have time to think about it, we're probably concluded, it's, it's all, most of it is just a mountain out of a molehill, most of it is not a big deal. And, uh, but I think the commission ha- has to do that, and, and they may say, the commission may study it and say, these are big problems, and then they'll tell you and I what we need to do to respond to, uh, the, the association.
Sounds good.
Okay.
You okay?
Yeah, um, and I, I actually did mean to send all the spreadsheet before this meeting, but I figured it would help to have a conversation about it. And I think, you know, as, I will send it to y'all, and then if you have, if you wanna.
Can it be better than, what is that, two?
Yeah, two font. It's just because I printed it out, and I, you know.
I can't believe you were reading that, I'm like, what the?
I know, I'm being cool for me.
Doesn't look like anything to me.
You talking about the font?
Shoot, yes, it's, it's like.
Oh, yeah, it's very tiny on this piece of paper.
It looks like pieces of.
My eye, my brain hurt just looking over there.
Anyway, if y'all are reading this over and wanna give me a call or something to hear what that sounded like talking to him, because I think you might have some questions that you might wanna talk to me about, so give me a call.
Absolutely.
Cool.
All right, moving on to item number thirteen, discuss and consider, Kingsbury City Commission Mission and Vision Statement.
Okay.
Frank's.
Would y'all, do y'all feel there's a need to have a mission and vision statement? Do we, do you feel like we have one already?
I feel like I wrote a pretty good one.
I know you wrote one.
Yeah.
But is it, did we adopt it? No, but is that something we're gonna continue to work towards? Having a mission, a vision for Kingsbury, and a mission statement for the city of Kingsbury?
It's hard to have it.
Okay.
I mean, is it something other cities do, and how?
I don't know, I don't care what it is.
You look at, if you look around at them, some of them do, some of them don't.
Since we're a liberty city, I think it makes sense to explain why a liberty city isn't, I mean, I feel like I kinda covered some of that in the mission statement.
Yes.
Didn't, didn't we have a three-sentence?
Yeah.
Paragraph when we incorporated in twenty fifteen?
Oh.
Uh, I thought we did, uh.
We might have.
We had, might have done a mission statement.
Maybe it's just.
Uh, at the, at the time.
Living simply well.
No.
Three words, mission statement, yeah.
Inauguration.
Yeah, the inaug, but, but it wasn't, it was probably done in twenty sixteen, uh, there was a bunch of ordinances that we did.
Yeah, we can look that.
And I think you might have done something that's, what I would call a mission.
Something like a big statement.
Uh, but, uh, you know, the, the, the vision is also, I mean, it could mean a lot of things.
I know.
It's like cheese and red cloud, visions all the time, and I love cheese and red cloud, so.
But it's, but it's like, the ordinance you wrote, and, and the big push for a strategic plan, um, recently, and I'm, I'm looking at some strategic plans, and I'm looking at some. Ordin- not ordinances, but the planning and zoning, which is a lot what it tells you, and it's, and I think, it's kinda like a part of like a vision for this community, uh, quite possibly. A vision, but the actual mission, uh, is this more specifically just the idea of what we'd like, and the mission is like how we're gonna get there, which sounds to me like the strategic plan, it's all kinda like melting together in, in my head. But I, I really would like to have, I wanna, I would like to solicit more involvement by the general public, using the message board, but.
You can go on Facebook.
But, you know what, yeah, and, and, you know, all I can ask is that, if I, because I might post something that you were absolutely inflamed and furious about, and I would, I hope you would respond.
Uh, but you tell me that.
No.
No, tell me, that, that's all you have to tell me about, something like that. You don't have to explain yourself, just tell me, to me, it was.
So we definitely want to, to continue this, yeah.
But I would like to, I would like to pursue that, yeah, and whatever funky fashion I, don't step on both my feet, uh, but yeah.
Hey, we have some good language, you know.
We can post, we can post some stuff in.
How do they have a room full of angry people, then nobody, then nobody?
So you think we should go back to turn it regarding strategic plans?
Well, I don't know what, I kinda know what you would like, I kinda know you, I kinda know what you would like, I think I kinda know what you and what Tyler would like, I'm not sure what you would like, because I, I don't.
I'm not gonna be here, I'm not gonna be here.
Uh, yeah, you are.
I am here now, but I'm not, I don't know how long I can be here.
I know.
Be here now.
So you're, alright, but there's a whole lot of different people, I was like, I was sitting at my house wondering, uh, reading, thinking about this, and why does anybody move to Kingsbury? And I said, well, some of us are kinda like more or less born here, grew up here, it's like, that's been home. Some of us came here, why did, why, and why did you, why did you, and then?
I came to get out of a big city, I think Sam did too.
But, but also, you had a, a, a property connection through shame.
Yes.
So, that's.
I came to be a family.
Yeah, and I came here, I know why I came here, and all I think about, because I didn't wanna hear what my neighbors were saying, I didn't wanna saw what they were eating for supper, and nor complaining when I was sawing wood in the middle of the night, you know? And, uh, and, uh, and the people across the street, they're very quiet, they all moved in, they set up their homes, some of them have goats, some have chickens, some, I don't know what, I never seen them, and they're quietly living their life, and they're doing, but, you know?
So if you need to know.
So why are you here, and what do you want it to be? Are you gonna stay here for the ten, twenty years? What do you want it to be like? You wanna stay the way it is? Say so, and then help us figure out how to make that happen. It's, if everybody's on the same page, we can do all kinds of things.
Well, even if this, this group and the people, uh, that you represent, even if they're not on the same page, because.
Yeah.
We're all, like you said, we all have a different, uh, but we can discuss it reasonably, and without being mad at each other.
I would.
I might, I might get carried away, get on my soapbox, and I'm not mad.
I think of it like a family, I said, I got, you got a husband and a wife, and you got all their children, and then you have a brother-in-law, maybe they've moved in with you too, and oh, there's, there's, there's an elderly grandparent that has, had these, and they stay with you. You've got this big family, and they're all different people, and they have disagreements, they have arguments, they have, no, this is, and you have the one person says, I'm the father, and we will do it this way, because that's the rule, that's it. And so then you've got some of your children going, I'm outta here, and you go, well, I didn't mean for you to leave, and it's not too late. And it's, oh, that's an easy solution for them, it's not the one they want, it's not the way you would treat your family, you don't do that. So, you have to work together, sometimes you have to eat oatmeal for supper because that's what most people want, you know, and it's like, I could eat oatmeal tonight, it's okay. And, and that's, you know, I don't know, I just, I don't think anybody, I'm all ready to get together, no, but I would, I would like to see it.
Yeah, well, we can definitely keep this.
Yeah.
You know, uh.
Wanna keep it alive.
Yeah, keep it alive, let's keep it alive.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
So are you gonna post some stuff on the bulletin board, is that?
Prob- probably.
Okay.
Message board, and it'll all be in the general discussion, all of it, and, uh, if you log in as, as what you are, everybody knows who you are, even if you don't log in, you can create your own name, but I would prefer you use your real name. Because I'd like to see dissent between us, on even little things, big things, it doesn't matter, I want to see some dissent, and some discussion, and give maybe people a little incentive to join in.
I do wanna, uh, I would.
We've got two missions on the website, uh, the one that, uh, Elena has proposed, and one that Allison proposed, and, uh, so, uh, you know, if you need to have public hearings or whatever, you can, but you can just come up with your mission, put it on there, and then have a, and then go from there, and y'all consider, okay, let's make, let's, we've got three to.
People can pick it apart and make a new one if they want.
Well, I, I hope to inspire somebody to, to actually get actively involved and, and express in their opinion, but I really, my grand scheme, I hate to tell them. I would like, I want something that, like planning and zoning, so dividing, I want something to offer people to make them want to be in Kingsbury, not just in the ETJ.
I agree.
I would love it if you could be in the ETJ and have all the same benefits and protections and services that citizens have, that would make it real easy, you know? But the state so far is not gonna let that happen.
Yeah.
So, but I'd love to be asking to be part of Kingsbury because they want what we have to offer, and what we have to offer, uh, to me is like liberty city concept of self-government on a very small scale, mostly by you, not, not government for its own sake, you know?
Right, and I, I had a conversation a few months ago with, uh, somebody who's involved with Wimberly, um, the Springs, actually, the, the, there's a Springs organization up there, was?
That area, but.
Yeah.
I drove school bus on there, so.
It's a historic Springs something or other, anyway, she was talking about when Wimberly formed, and I know they're totally different than us, and they're not a liberty city, but, um, evidently, one of their big things was preserving rural, ruralness, and the legitimacy of rural living. Which is something we're all pursuing, and it might be interesting to either go meet them, maybe sit on, she said she could introduce me, I was saying, well, maybe we get all the city commission to go over there for a meeting, or, you know, meet the Wimberly folks, and I know that they, you know, they have a lot more rules than we do, or we want, you know, they, there are certain things, the way they, the, the buildings look and everything, we don't wanna do that.
Yeah, they do have a lot of it.
But I'd be interested to see what kinda language they're using as far as the rural thing.
See, we don't want that, and yet that is what, what was able to maintain, without those rules, that would not have been maintained.
Yes.
Having been there, they're just a risky community, totally different, they're geologic, but downtown Wimberly is gonna remain because.
And they have to make an art of it. And they, they had to argue with the state of Texas, I think, they had to, they had to present their case, like, we wanna stay rural, we want, we don't want development, we don't want any of this urban stuff.
Oh, but they have development.
I know, but a lot less than, I mean.
Other than that's, that's, that's what you can hope for, but like, but I, you know, the rural aspect of Kingsbury, I understand, and it's like, most of us come pretty close to living that type of lifestyle, pretty close, not so much, close, but not. Across the street, downtown Kingsbury, all those people, they're not in a rural existence, I mean, to me, they don't have acreage, they don't have livestock, they don't have wildlife running through their place.
Don't they have a rural asylum that they know, have all their neighbors, and it's small, and there's not a lot of people around?
Or if you live in a neighborhood, and it's again, I lived in a neighborhood in Austin, a little subdivision neighborhood, we, we knew everybody, four block radius, you knew everybody, you knew every kid, what they, what kinda bike they had, and you went and did they, and, well, life was good when you were a kid, it didn't matter, uh, but.
Times have changed, and you wanted that out early.
But still the same thing, and the families looking for a place to live, they're looking for work, they need a job to earn money, and they need a place to live, and you can't, well, yeah, you could, you could buy fifty acres and, and could be sat at home every day. If that's okay with you, then you can have a job like that, you know?
Or you can live right here, working a chip factory in Calhoun County.
You can use to it, you can use to it.
Or you can, the things that I've run across lately, that exist in, in the sort of immediate area, well, it's just across the street, huh, yeah, pretty much is. There's a chip factory over here, between Luling and Lockhart.
A what?
Chip.
Between Luling and Lock, oh, on one eighty-three?
No, it's not on the highway.
Potato chips, microchips, computer chips.
Computer chips.
Okay. The different things that are around you, we just don't realize it, because we don't talk to our neighbors.
Well, there's, you know, that's what you have, this, the social thing, it's now.
Uh, I guess, just before we all pick up and leave, there's a comment on the video here that somebody left, uh, that I wondered if, it just says, can we, Beverly Vincent Durat says, can we please have an emergency plan to help Kingsbury residents during severe weather and other emergency situations?
Yeah.
It would be good to have a good plan before it's needed. Um, I just wanted to tell y'all that that is there.
I think that's, hi, Beverly, um, I think that's.
I'll be your blinder, I'll be your blinder, come on, yeah.
And that's actually something that David, our fire chief, has pushed for as well, and Myron, and, um, maybe they can help us come up with one, because I feel the same way, I mean, if something happens, like, where do we go, what do we do, just something to send out people, like, do we come to the fire station, or do we not come to the fire, you know?
Well.
Does the fire station not need a bunch of Kingsbury residents?
Beverly, if you're still there, you know, develop, tell us what the plan should be, I mean, what are you looking for, what are, what's needed, I don't know, a starting point somewhere.
I think she, that we just heard, what's the, where do I go?
Where do you go in the case of a fire?
Is there gonna be, is there gonna be anybody at any one of the places in Kingsbury where you could, where's the help gonna be?
Where do you think, where would you like to go?
Yeah.
I guess it depends on what disaster you're talking about.
Right.
Is it a freeze, is it a, you know?
Right. Right.
I think maybe each scenario, though, I mean, the fire department, like David was saying, you know, when you come up with an emergency.
Management.
Management, it is for like, so what if there's a forest fire that wants to burn down Kingsbury? What do we do then? What do we do in the case of a flood? What do we do in the case of a freeze?
Well, that's where we go through.
But most of it, yeah, yeah, most of it is, is calling in the appropriate entities. Um, I know when we had a freeze, we had the, I learned afterwards, we had the upper daily call-in, but they call account, which is cellular on wheels, because we didn't have any cell service, you know, because.
Yeah, I see the towers and the towers.
Things had gone down. Uh, uh, and for the hurricane, for Harvey, you know, there was operating for cellular on wheels. But mostly, it's, it's identifying and calling in the correct.
Yeah.
Entities that not, not necessarily governmental, but the other, the entities that can.
Respond to the.
Can respond to that particular.
Yeah.
And an actual voice calls the ladies.
Yeah.
You gonna have to call the Kingsbury post office now? Forget it. Well, you can, and I.
I'm sure I called everyone emergency, babe.
But I, I think, so maybe we can generate an emergency call list and things that we should, what, what should we be doing? Who should we be calling? The city commissioners, and, you know, maybe all of us need a list of, of one, two, three, four, five, like.
Meeting or planning process they have.
Thank you, Beverly.
Worldwide for the emergency management program.
Yeah.
Um, in that state, thing, Elena sent us.
Yeah.
State of Texas, uh.
Registry.
Yeah, registry.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, like right here, if everybody, if everybody in this community wanted to meet in one place, there is not a place to be enough for it. Yeah. Uh, but if you had, if you had a need to leave your place and seek shelter, yeah, we could probably manage that. Well, it depends on how many people are, of course.
Yeah.
But then we're all in it together, so we'll figure it out.
All right, yeah, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt to start with something.
Yeah, no.
Yeah. All right.
Well, let's work on that next meeting, I'll, I'll be happy to sponsor that one, um, but, yeah.
Great. All right, at this point, we adjourn.
Hooray, good night, everyone.
Very much, thank you, Frank.
Um, sign these things. Yes, ma'am.